Good morning. We're going to get started with an invocation from Pastor Kenneth Sherrill of Greater New Zion Baptist Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Wesley Robinson of Girl Scouts Troop 380. Please stand.
Let me bow our heads. Dear wise and loving Father, you have been so good to us. First Lord, let me say thank you on behalf of all who I've gathered here today. Thank you for the many abundant blessings. Thank you for life, for the measure of our health, to feel our callings and our duties. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of hearing appropriate responsibilities. Therefore now, I pray for our mayor and the various levels of city officials, in particular, the assembled council that's here this morning. And I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern the conflicting issues of this time, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is a honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda that is set before us today, that it will please you, dear Father, and please those who live and work in and around our city. We thank you now, God. You have truly been good. In the blessed name, we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Wesley. And I saw a cart of Girl Scout cookies in the lobby outside if anybody wants to buy some. Okay, I call this meeting of the City Council to order. Item three is Office of the Mayor. We have several resolutions to handle. One, I need to defer. The honorees were unavailable this morning, and so that is item 3E. If I might, if we could maybe get a motion to defer this to our next meeting in two weeks, and then we'll handle the rest. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Oh, Ward seven wishes to vote aye. Ward two as well. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you for that bit of housekeeping. I will now make my way to the front. Okay. Well, first of all, we're going to start with someone who was very special to us at City Hall. The mayor and council only hire essentially three people, the city manager, the city attorney, and the city auditor. And for many years, Jim Williamson filled the role of city auditor and was respected and beloved here at City Hall and received a very devastating diagnosis a few weeks ago. And we knew that our time with Jim was short, and we actually had already scheduled today's commemoration of him. And though he did not make it to see it personally, we wanted to obviously maintain this plan. And so we are deeply honored to have members of his family here today, and we have a resolution honoring Jim's service to the people of Oklahoma City. And I would ask the clerk to read that resolution.
Whereas Jim Williamson graduated from the University of Oklahoma in 1984 and became a certified public accountant in 1986, he joined the Office of the City Auditor as a senior auditor in 1988 after working for an international accounting firm. And whereas in 1993, Jim became a certified internal auditor, receiving the certificate of excellence for achieving one of the six highest scores on the related examination. And whereas promoted to audit manager in 1994, Jim developed and implemented a performance auditing program that enhanced audit services and continues to be used today. And whereas Jim was promoted to assistant city auditor in 2000 and was one of the first to become a nationally certified government audit professional. And whereas Jim led several groundbreaking audits that increased the effectiveness and efficiency of city operations and administration of sales tax revenue collections. One of the most impactful resulted in the recovery of $3 million in sales tax revenues for Oklahoma City and more than $9 million for other local governments in Oklahoma. Jim won the Association of Local Government Auditors highest award for an audit in the United States and Canada. And whereas Jim was appointed a city auditor by the mayor and city council in 2008. Under Jim's leadership, the city continued to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the administration of sales tax revenue collections, improved accountability and performance management in the Judicial Division of the Courts Administration Department, improved general obligation bond program performance, including increased expenditures, consolidated code enforcement, construction, and business licensing inspection services into a newly created development services department, and improved construction inspection completion times. And whereas Jim served as the president of the Association of Local Government Auditors, ALGA, in 2007, and on the ALGA Board of Directors from 2004 to 2006. The organization recently recognized Jim's significant contributions to the local government auditing profession with the Lifetime Achievement Award. And whereas Jim contributed to the auditing profession locally by serving as president of the Oklahoma City Chapter of the Institute of Internal Auditors. He also served on the Oklahoma Accountancy Board's Peer Review Oversight Committee overseeing organizations administering peer reviews of certified public accounting firms throughout Oklahoma. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby honor Jim Williamson for his 33 years of dedicated service to the city of Oklahoma City, a body of work that resulted in a more just, efficient, and transparent municipal government.
Thank you, Amy. Why don't we handle the adoption of this resolution, and then we'll have some more words to say. So let's get a motion in a second. Cast your votes. I wish to vote aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Now, Jim's wife Susan is here, and we'll hear from her in a moment. But I thought that there might be some members of council who worked closely with Jim who may wish to say a few words, and I know the city manager does as well. Mark?
You know, one of the things I'd like to remember about Jim, I asked a lot of dumb questions about auditing and accounting, and Jim never, ever got frustrated, never rolled his eyes. He was always, and I'll use this word intentionally, patient with me, kind and caring. He was one of my favorite people to work with at City Hall. He will be greatly missed, and thank you for being here today.
David?
Thank you. I had the pleasure of working with Jim ever since I joined the council in 2011, being on the audit committee and got to see firsthand the results. Jim would lead excellent financial audits, but also excellent managerial audits, and his efforts really enhanced and improved the operations of the city in so many ways. Just a tremendous job. And as Mark mentioned, very patient, just your ideal auditor, you know, and very thorough. And when he encountered problems, he would never, you know, back away, would always try to get those issues resolved and in a very pleasant manner. So he'll be greatly missed, not only from the city's perspective, but within the profession. Jim was well-recognized throughout Oklahoma as one of the stars in terms of CPAs. And as was mentioned, he served on the peer review board for the Oklahoma Accountancy for many years. And the accounting profession is a self-regulatory profession, and one of the ways we're able to accomplish that is through continual peer review. And Jim really led that initiative. And again, he'll be greatly missed by the profession, by everyone here at the city of Oklahoma City, and I'm sure in regards to his family. And I wish condolences on to them. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, just to echo what we heard, that one of the first people you meet when you are elected is the auditor. And when you think audit, it's like, uh-oh. But Mr. Williamson was gentle, as we heard, so he didn't make audit sound that bad. And also, I know for myself, learning and understanding local government in the eye of what is audited. He was very patient with myself, and I do agree, when I would ask questions pertaining to certain subjects, he'd look and then he'd say, let me find out. He never said no. He never said, I can't do that. He said, let me find out. And he was always able to come back with a response, and I do appreciate that. So I do remember the last council meeting that I saw him. I remember that vividly because he just walked by me. And to hear the news in the next couple of days that we weren't going to see him for a little while was quite devastating because you get used to seeing people in this space. You get used to people just walking by you, saying hello, and just keeping, keeping on where they're going and where they're headed. But we do know that he has transitioned to a better place to audit in the sky. That's what I'd like to think of him doing right now. So to the family, my thoughts and prayers are continuously with you during this time because to lose a family member for us is just as devastating for your loss. So we are with you, and our thoughts are with you as well.
Thank you. Over here.
Yeah, please. I just wanted to say real quickly that, you know, Jim's ability to audit, in my opinion, like the processes that we use as a city was fascinating to me when he had called us in and go over what his findings were. To me, it was just amazing how deeply he was able to dive in and find resolutions. But as great as an auditor as he was, he was a great man. And I can honestly say, I never went to a meeting or passed him in the hallway and had a short visit that I didn't feel better about myself after talking to Jim. I mean, it's just, he was so positive, and it just, you know, it would sit there and affect me the same way. So I'm very sorry for your loss. Thank you for his service.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah. Jim, it's, you know, the design that we have here in our form is that the auditor is appointed by the council so that the office is independent from management so that they hold us accountable. And generally, just, you know, you think about it, you think of the auditor, and you think, oh, this isn't good. Jim created an environment, it started before him, but Jim carried on an environment where they would come and do audits, and he was always about identifying problems, but immediately looked towards finding the solutions. And he has consistently done that. His audit team is here, and they've carried that on. They lived that through their profession, through his character. And I'm just so grateful for the relationship that we had for so many years. He's been unbelievable for his profession, for the city organization, the list that we have. You couldn't print a resolution long enough to list everything that he's helped improve, and things that we do better today because of that, that holding us accountable. Jim, I just, I can't say enough about him, what he meant to us as an organization, but for me personally, as a friend. And he was the kind of friend that even though we're friends, you all have seen the audits. He didn't pull punches. I mean, like, they laid it out there, laid the facts out there. But it was always to make things better. It was never to try to make someone look bad. It was always about making things better. And I am going to miss him so deeply. And I, to the family, I just say to you, thank you for sharing him with us.
And Susan, if you wanted to say a few words, I hope you got a little, you and the family got a little taste of what Jim meant to all of us.
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for your kind words, and your thoughts, and prayers, and cards. Jim used to tell me that he wasn't an important person, but that he knew a lot of important people. I think he'd be really honored that you guys thought he was important enough to do well. That's for us. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's hear it for Jim. All right, let's transition now to honoring our Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year. And this is Lieutenant Brian Taylor. And Brian, if you'd come up and join me. Brian, we're grateful for your service, and we would love to learn a little bit more about you. And so I'm going to ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Lieutenant Brian Taylor has been a city employee for 16 years and is a police lieutenant and the deputy emergency management director in the Office of Emergency Management. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor was new to emergency management, when the pandemic broke out and had to familiarize himself to his new duties while responding to complex challenges brought on by COVID-19, followed by two natural disasters. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor monitored ongoing police protests and severe storms while coordinating mutual aid support to Tulsa and COVID-19-related responsibilities while continuing to perform his normal duties. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor distributed PPE to school districts in central Oklahoma by coordinating a large-scale pod at the Cox Convention Center, as well as a drive-through pod for flu shots for city employees. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor worked closely with Emergency Management's fire liaison to plan, coordinate, and run 32 COVID-19 vaccination pods, dispensing more than 8,000 doses of vaccine to employees, contractors, and household members. And whereas Lieutenant Brian Taylor is a dependable and skillful employee who takes initiative and is always willing to help. And whereas the council desires to recognize Lieutenant Brian Taylor for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Lieutenant Brian Taylor, 2021 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year.
Thank you. And it would seem odd if the 2021 Employee of the Year did not work in emergency management. And 2020, and maybe 2022. There you go, yeah. Makes sense. So we would like to adopt this resolution real quick, if we can get a motion in a second. We have that. Please cast your votes. I would like to vote aye. Passes unanimously. What a time it has been. And obviously, as evidenced by the words we heard in the resolution, you and your whole team and Captain Barnes have risen to the occasion. Thank you so much for helping us get through these extraordinary times that we've lived in. Would you like to say a few words?
I would, if you don't mind, sir. Well, I'd like to first start off thanking council for the unanimous vote on this. This has been an interesting year. Actually, this has been an interesting several years. But I, you know, first I wanted to say, you know, we had a good team. And I was trying to think of a way to encapsulate what we've done in these past year. And, you know, it's just teamwork. And Andrew Carnegie, I found a quote from him, says, "Teamwork is the ability to work together toward a common vision. The ability to direct individual accomplishments towards organizational objectives is the fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results." And I think we've accomplished that. You know, obviously, I know I'm one of many that has done something in the past year to make this work. So I would feel remiss if I stood up here and took all the credit without acknowledging some people. Obviously, Chief Gorley is here, my major, Major Stewart is here. They've supported us and backed us up with every decision we've made and what we've done. But also the people who have come out to help us accomplish everything. You know, I'll just start off, Captain Audra George from Special Events, Sergeant Jesse Butts and Sergeant Steve Johnson, they were invaluable to us in helping us with these pods and all the other things that we did for the city employees. Sam Blumenthal, Marcia Neely, Victoria Bayless, Brett House, Chris Lot, and all of the Mobile Command Center personnel who came out. They helped us with all 32 of our pods, got everybody in and out as seamlessly as we could. Our, my, the major, the fire liaison that was referenced in the resolution, he's now retired, Major Scott Grubbs. He worked hand-in-hand with me and got everything accomplished. Now our new fire liaison, Major Scott Osborne, he's continued on doing vaccinations and has taken that on himself. I'd like to thank the numerous firefighters who came out because we had, you know, anywhere from four to eight firefighters at every one of the pods helping give vaccinations. And without them, we couldn't have done that either. In our office, you know, Sharon Ray is our office coordinator. She's done a lot for us. Maria Chivari is our public information and marketing coordinator. She got a lot of our messaging out and worked with Kristi Jaeger in the city PIM office to get the messaging out to the city employees. Obviously, we can't forget about Captain Barnes. He's been that rock that's been there for us and kept us all pointed in the right direction. There's two people here that even today, you guys still receive information that they generate. So Molly Rainey from Mbar is the one with the camera. The graphs that we create in our situation reports, she puts those together from information from the state and city health departments. And then Ryan Baker, sitting there in the black mask and the gray jacket, he's the one who does the weekly data report that Frank includes in the situation report. So without either of them continuing to do that, some of the information we provide just wouldn't happen. Our former MMU analyst, Master Sergeant Kim Holmes from the airport, she still provides us with medical information and helps us, helps us interpret CDC and keep moving forward. And she's going to hate me for this, but last but not least, my wife, Mignon. She, she's been there for me every day, every weekend. When I've gotten up and left before the sun came up and she was still asleep, she was there when I came home after the sun was down and let me vent when things went wrong and didn't really care, listened, and we went on to the next thing. So I think she's watching. So thank you. Thank you, Mignon, for being there for me. But thank you to everybody. Thank you for this resolution. Thank you very much.
Let's hear it for Lieutenant Taylor. All right, let's bring Jane up here. Most of us think of Jane Abraham as sort of Employee of the Century, but we're only giving her a month this time. Let's hear, even though I feel like we know all this, let's hear a little bit more about Jane Abraham. I'd ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Shane Abraham has been a city employee for 22 years and is the community and government affairs manager in the city manager's office. And whereas Jane Abraham oversees the city's state and federal legislative agendas and manages large contracts, special projects, budget, and performance measures for the city manager's office. And whereas Jane Abraham serves on local committees such as the United Way of Central Oklahoma's Research and Community Initiatives Committee and the Greater Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce Government Relations Steering Committee. She is also the chairperson of the Oklahoma Municipal League Legislative Committee and a member of the International City County Management Association. And whereas Jane Abraham participated in the inaugural municipal leadership development program in 2005 and has since provided executive oversight, leadership, and vision to the program that has graduated and opened career opportunities for more than 600 employees. And whereas Jane Abraham is recognized as an advocate for employee development and engagement through promotion of leadership and learning opportunities within the city and community by fostering relationships that promote continuing education, professional development, and community connections. And whereas Jane Abraham cares deeply about the continued success of Oklahoma City and inspires employees and residents with her positivity, leads with vision and purpose, and understands the value of mentorship. And whereas this council desires to recognize Jane Abraham for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of the city of Oklahoma City. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Jane Abraham, February 2022, South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
All right, why don't we handle the passage of this resolution real quick? Let's get a motion in a second. All right, we could come back to that. So, all right, we're gonna, you let me know, just kind of wave when you think that's something, think we're getting close. So it was mentioned that you were in the inaugural municipal leadership development program. I was also in that same class, and of course, I used to sit next to Jane. Our offices were adjacent, and so I've had a front row seat for her remarkable career of service to the people of Oklahoma City. I know in relation to that specific program, there are some people here who wanted to add on to the recognitions that we hope we're going to give you at some point this morning, and if they've come forward.
On behalf of the co-chairs, past, present, and future, Jane, we just want to say thank you for your leadership, for the people who've been part of that. We wanted to honor you with this memorial right here. Jane Abraham, 15 years of leadership and vision. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I think we have a motion in a second. Cast your votes on the resolution. Cast your votes on the resolution. And I would like to vote aye.
Ward two would like to vote aye. The entire ward would like to vote aye.
I'll vote aye.
Is nobody getting the chance to vote? Is that what I'm hearing? Has anyone not voted? Okay, there we go, there we go. Passes unanimously. Well, you've heard it, so much appreciation and love for you, Jane. Thank you for your amazing service. And now, we would love to hear a few words from you.
Just a few. Okay, sounds good. Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just, just a few words. So I dragged my family here. My husband Eric and my daughter Emily are here. So I really appreciate you guys being here for this recognition. And to the co-chairs for Municipal Leadership Development, this program, you know, you get pulled into projects sometimes, and you think, I don't know, is this gonna, how's this gonna work? And it's just been an amazing journey. Every co-chair has added, you know, new, and developed the program over the years. And it's just been such a huge benefit to employees, and I've just, it's been an honor to be part of it, as is an honor to just be part of the City of Oklahoma City. And I just appreciate all of you and your leadership and this organization. So thank you so much. Thank you.
And finally, Duncan, if you, Duncan would come forward. It's Fugit, correct?
Fugit.
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 Nice, nice, all right. Mr. Fugit, we would love to learn a little bit more about you and the service you provide the young people of our city, so I would ask the clerk to read this resolution.
Whereas Duncan Fugit has been named Teacher of the Month for February 2022 by Edmund Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. And whereas Duncan received his Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the University of Oklahoma in 2013, graduating summa cum laude. And whereas Duncan has taught physics at Edmund North High School for seven years and developed the first STEM course in his school district that offers a collaborative learning experience between math and science. And whereas Duncan has served as the head coach for the boys' tennis program for the past six years and led them to two 6A state championships in 2018 and 2019, and two runner-up finishes in 2017 and 2021. And whereas Duncan is a member of the National Science Teachers Association and works with many other teachers in the district to help develop and implement engaging curriculum that allows students to experience science in an engaging and personal way. He is also a member of the U.S. Tennis Association, seeking to continually improve as a coach to better serve his student athletes. And whereas Duncan has also been awarded the 2021 Edmund Public Schools District Teacher of the Year. And whereas Duncan considers himself to be a passionate and dynamic teacher who values each day as an opportunity to help his students grow as students and as people. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Duncan Fugit on his selection as the February 2022 Teacher of the Month by Edmund Public Schools and Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Thank you, and thank you Duncan for your amazing service, and we are very grateful. And we would like to recognize that gratitude through passage of this resolution. So let's see if we can get a motion in a second. We have it. Cast your votes. I would like to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Haven't had a no vote yet.
I, you know, I'd like to turn the conversation, we can start with that.
Well, we'd love to hear a few words from you, and again, thank you for all you do.
Well, I don't want to take too much time, I just thank you, City Council, for taking the time to recognize me and just other teachers in general. A few people that are here, I'd like to recognize my father, who, I couldn't list all the things that I would need to thank him for, my principal, Ms. Davis, who every day sets a phenomenal tone at our school. Emily Steele, who's one of our district representatives, and Deanna, thank you all so much for taking the time to be here. Don't want to take, again, too much time, but just, I, as a teacher, really firmly believe that our most important resource is our young people, and I think that offering a free, high-quality, public education to our students in Edmund, Oklahoma City, all the metro area is the best resource that we as a community can give. All of us are a product of some form of education, and I think the better our job we do at educating and training our people, our young students, to not just be good students, but to be high-quality people, people of compassion and dignity, respect, honor, understanding the things we talk about at our school regularly, I think is gonna make our society as a whole a much better place. And so, thank you all for taking the time to recognize teachers, it's an important time to do that. The last few years in education have been challenging, and I think that the teachers that are still here are the ones that really value their profession and the work that they do. So thank you all for taking the time to recognize me and other teachers as well. So thank you very much.
Not quite done with Office of the Mayor yet. Now we're at item 3F. This is some, a series of appointments, actually just all reappointments to the Residential Building Code Commission. We can handle, why don't we take that with a separate motion? Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Then we have item 3G. This is a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors' Winter Leadership Meeting in Miami Beach, Florida in March. Take this with a motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the six required affirmative votes. And then 3H. This is a resolution approving travel expenses for me to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, D.C. in March. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the six required affirmative votes. And then finally, we have item I-1 and I-2. I-1 is a resolution appointing a city auditor to the Office of the City Auditor of the City of Oklahoma City on an interim basis. And then we have an executive session to discuss that matter. I would suggest that we use that, and we'll do that, of course, at the end of the meeting, but I'd like to go ahead and approve the executive session now. So if we get a motion in a second. Passes unanimously. So we'll handle that executive session as our typical practice is, at the end of our other business, at which time we might come back and consider I-1. Okay, moving on now to item 4, items from council. We have item 4A. This is a resolution approving city business-related travel expenses for council members Bradley Carter, Mark Stonecypher, and Nikki Nice to attend the National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington in March. I have a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required six affirmative votes. Moving on now to item 5, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, the first item we have on here is a presentation from the Human Rights Commission Task Force, and the co-chairs are Councilwoman Nice, Mariana Adams, and Dr. Andrea Benjamin. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Nice and let her kind of just kick this off and let them take us through the recommendations from the task force.
Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. First of all, I would like to say that this has been a long, thorough, tedious process to get us to where we are today, and I do want to take time to also honor and thank the ladies and gentlemen that were a part of, first, our task force for us to get this to where it is today. And I want all of us to understand and realize that these folks came from all kind of different political backgrounds, cultural backgrounds, anything you can think of, to ensure that we had all voices at the table for this conversation. I also want to honor and acknowledge and thank our co-chairs, Mariana Adams and Dr. Andrea Benjamin, for their tireless work in this effort, and also to our municipal attorneys. We had Jared Beatty, we also had Ms. Rita Douglas Tally, and also to Ms. Jane Abraham. Thank you so much. And my little comment to you, Ms. Jane, and from our book club last week, what you shared, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it. That's just my, I know you know what I'm talking about, too, don't do it. But I do want to say again, thank you, and for our council, other council members that were on there with us, thank you as well. And I would like to just turn it over to the ladies for them to do the presentation, and we'll take questions and honor your commitment to this process afterwards. Well, while that's getting set up, good morning, everyone, and thank you for your time. Good morning, Mayor, City Manager Freeman, and council members. We are so excited to provide a progress report on behalf of the Human Rights Commission Task Force of Oklahoma City. My name is Mariana Adams, I'm joined by Dr. Benjamin and two of our work group chairs, David and Jessica Rose. Thank you, Jessica, for joining us. This has been a process. At the beginning of this process, I lived in Ward 8, I now live in Ward 7. So lots have happened over the last 18 months. But just to create some sort of background and framework for this discussion, in the summer of 2020, Mayor David Holt created a task force to draft a proposal for city council to reestablish the Human Rights Commission of Oklahoma City, which we had one for quite a while, but it was dissolved in 1996. As Councilwoman Nice mentioned, appointments were made by the mayor, as well as myself and others comprised of 40 individuals, including geographic, racial, and political diversity. We have members of both the fire and police force, clergy, and religious leaders across many faiths, teachers, business owners, executives, and public officials, including those that were named, and I just want to thank you all. Mr. Stone, Stonecypher, of course, Councilwoman Nice and Hammond for your service on this task force. Next slide. At the onset of its formation, the co-chairs proposed a process framework that included measurable outcomes and goals, division of labor via work groups, action plans, and a democratic voting process and procedure, including 51% quorum, a 51% quorum threshold. After a thorough discussion, the framework was adopted by the task force, and each work group elected a chair and co-chair and collectively approved an action plan, and you all will hear a summary of each of those work group's findings and recommendation. Those documents can be made available for review. So far as case study, which I'll bring up, Dr. Benjamin, to summarize their work group's findings, we selected cities that share many geographic and demographic characteristics, as well as the population size that are relative to Oklahoma City. The cities had diverse government systems, strong mayor, council manager, or hybrid. And to be fair, we examined cities that had existing human rights commissions, those with commissions and staff departments, and those without human rights commissions, but with staff departments, and finally, those with neither. So, Dr. Benjamin, would you like to come up and summarize some of your group's findings?
Sure, thank you so much. Dr. Valerie Couch couldn't be here, but she did send me some comments, so I'll just read them verbatim of her assessment as the chair of our working group. The case studies work group gathered information about the HRCs of 15 cities. These 15 cities were ones whose population, size, and type of municipal government, geographic region, proximity, or other characteristics made them of interest to our task force. Systematically, the work group described and compiled the characteristics, structure, mission, authority, and activities of the 15 cities, HRCs or not, to the extent available through municipal codes, city websites, and direct contacts. We found that municipal HRCs come in a variety of shapes, sizes, and forms. No two were the same. Some appeared to be successful contributions to the city's well-being, and others appeared to be utter failures, existing mostly on paper with no vital work apparent. We observed that the most productive and successful of the HRCs shared three aspects. One, the city provided substantial budget to support the HRC mission. Two, the city assigned dedicated professional staff to the HRC. And three, the HRC maintained a robust presence on the city website, serving as a resource to both the city's government and its residents. The websites of these HRCs served as sources of information and reflected year-round community engagement, activities, partnerships, and programs. Finally, although some of the HRCs had quasi-judicial authority to hear complaints of individuals within designated areas of human rights concerns, such as housing, employment, or public accommodations, that feature did not seem to dominate the HRC's activities. Instead, serving as a prompt and effective source of referrals to other local, state, and federal agencies, serving as a resource for the city council and other city departments, providing informative programs and forums for community conversations, partnering with schools and other organizations, and providing a voluntary mediation service seemed to be equally weighted in the contributions of the most successful HRCs. So that was from the case studies working group.
Thank you, Dr. Benjamin, for that summary. And then to the next work group, we had Policy and Legislation chaired by David Hall, which this process was guided by the City of Oklahoma City's legal counsel, who provided, like I said, guidance and oversight throughout that whole process to ensure legal feasibility. David, would you mind summarizing your group's findings and outcomes?
All right, so for us, what we did to start was, we're sort of firm believers in not recreating the wheel. So we originally took the previous ordinance that we had as sort of a roadmap, and then looked at current federal and state legislation, obviously the previous ordinance itself, to see what was prohibited, see what was allowable, so on. We also decided to make sure that we were taking notes continuously throughout the task force meetings, so that way we could see sort of what hot-button issues there were, quote-unquote, as well as issues that people wanted to really make sure that we were addressing, maybe questions that we saw that needed to be considered, things like that.
Do you need specialists?
Excuse me, Mr. Washington.
We have a right to speak, Mayor.
No, you do not. It's clearly stated on the agenda that items under City Manager Reports do not-
That's new stuff, we were doing it before you changed-
No, it's always been there, it's been there for 50 years, probably. So have a seat, and if you continue to interrupt the presentation, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall, if you continue to interrupt the presentation-
Yes, sir.
-we'll have no choice but to ask you to leave, because we have business we must conduct. Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you. If my time's due, we're gonna have fun, I can do that.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, with that, whenever we had all those notes that were taken to find those issues, what that then did was allowed us, whenever we actually created a draft, to make sure that we included those in, or whenever we were asking people like Ms. Rita and others for suggestions that they had based on concerns that were brought up, questions that were asked, things like that, we were able to make sure that it was included from the very beginning, so that way it could get the discussion that it deserved. From there, our working group sent out a, or should say, the co-chairs sent out a survey for our working group to use, to have sort of what I like to call unofficial numbers for our plug-and-chug, so things that are like, you know, for instance, we know we're going to have a number of members, we know they're gonna have a certain number of terms, so on. This would allow us to have something that wasn't really as much pie in the sky, something that was more concrete to be able to discuss. And that, and those numbers, those notes, those key issues, and so on, allowed us, allowed our, some members of our working group, as well as, as some members of our working group, as well as the co-chairs to create the first draft that we had. From there, we then proposed that to our full policy and legislation working group to discuss, as well as, as well as- to discuss, as well as, as well as we would amend, vote on, and so on. And we then proposed it to the full task force, who then amended it further, and so on, all with city, city legal staff involved throughout the entire process. So, and from there, we should be able to see that, see the ordinance later on proposed with all of these discussion points included. So, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you so much, David. And then our third work group is the Status of Human Rights in Oklahoma City. They identified primary and secondary data sources to validate constituents' human rights experiences and knowledge, behavior, and attitudes, as well as, we looked at some data, statewide data of hate crime statistics that had been reported through the local Oklahoma City Police Department. We'll share some of those statistics later on in the presentation. Lastly, but not least, we had our Working Relationship Group, which was chaired by Dr. Wilson, who couldn't be here with us, but we have Jane Rose, who also serves as the veteran liaison for the Mayor's Challenge on behalf of the city. So Jane, do you mind coming up and sharing a summary of your work group's findings?
Good morning, everyone. So, I'm here on behalf of my amazing work group. I couldn't do it without them. What we did as a work group is we really wanted to find out what was already going on with different organizations and agencies within the city and within the state. So we had a list of questions that we asked, and there were some revolving themes that we really saw that would be great to really address. And some of them was in regards to the definition itself for human rights versus civil rights. With our ever-evolving world and our ever-evolving language and our community constantly changing and moving, there's no real easy definition to keep up with everything. And that was something that was mentioned by a few different groups who we talked to was areas of evolving laws. So ensuring that we're still protecting our citizens where they're at today, because we're not where we were 10 years ago, thank God for that, right? I think we can all be very happy that every year we get better. Also, with a lot of the groups besides the definition, was really having set laws that were protecting both the human and the civil law. So there's some confusion in regards to what's already being done. And I just wanted to read for clarity, because I don't want to misspeak here, but the Office of Civil Rights Enforcement with the Oklahoma Attorney General's Office has the jurisdiction to investigate and litigate employment, housing, and public accommodation discrimination complaints. The Equal Employment Opportunity Commission investigates employment discrimination complaints, allegations, violations of federal law by employers with at least 15 or more employees. But what we see is a lot of the time, those things don't escalate and get to the point of going to the Attorney General's Office. So having a local community base where people can go to, one of the groups that we talked to said, a lot of people just don't understand the difference in human rights and civil rights, and if there is a violation, because as we know, there's a lot of people who aren't nice people, they're not human beings, so maybe they're just a jerk, to be completely frank about it. And it's not an actual violation of human rights or civil rights, but somebody's very upset about it. So some of our organizations said that that's a lot of what they do, is just educating as to what is a human rights violation and what's a civil rights violation, and having somebody being able to have that conversation and de-escalate a situation. Some of the comments that were made were even on the hate crimes, not having a very distinct hate crime law, or following it and things being reported as hate crimes and often being dismissed. So in such situations like that, it would be a lot easier for a city and community to come together to handle and resolve these issues, so our city can heal and move on from it, rather than it then being escalated into something like the Attorney General's Office or further on. And we have a lot of, like I said, different answers from a lot of the groups, but again, the reoccurring themes were no true definition of human rights versus civil rights, and being able to bring that to a city level and continue to educate. We have some amazing groups and nonprofits here in the city that we're lucky to have. Some of them do reach out to across the entire state but are housed here in the city that help a lot of our community members, but they see a lot of people, and that's something that's a problem. If we're seeing a lot of people in our nonprofits and our community organizations that are trying to figure this out and work between what are laws that are existing, then we're not doing a very good job as a city to really protect people that are feeling that they're not protected. If anyone has any further questions, please let me know. I know that we are short on time, and I appreciate being here today.
Thank you so much, Jane Rose, for that summary. I just, again, want to, we want to really take a dive into the due diligence and the thoroughness that Councilwoman Nice had pointed out that have happened and taken place over 18 months by volunteers from your community. And so we just wanted to uplift that process and that, the procedures that were happening to make sure that you all understand that it was a transparent and fair process to date. Next slide, please, Jane. So, so far as the Status of Human Rights, in Quarter One of 2021, Sooner Poll, a local survey firm, was contracted to conduct cell phone, landline, and online surveys with a representative sample of the city. Sooner Poll is Oklahoma's only independent nonpartisan pollster that performs political and issue-oriented polling for the state's news media and various associations and interest groups. Here were some of their findings. I'm going to bring up Dr. Benjamin to share more about this data, but what I would say is, this is a representative survey. The top-line kind of survey demographics, a 50/50 gender split, racially diverse, the vast majority of the participants were Republicans, we had disability representation as well as veteran representation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Benjamin.
Yeah, and so, in my day job, I do research. And so I think the, to me, the key takeaway points, and again, if people are interested in this data, we can think about sharing that with you, but I think what became clear to us through this data collection is, one, we chose a local company because we wanted to make sure that we got Oklahoma City right, that we understood our local context, we could have paid someone else, and outside firm, we didn't do that. We wanted it locally. And, you know, it was a little bit disappointing to hear that people, so many people in our sample across a variety of groups have experienced discrimination. And so thinking about the goal of a human rights commission, thinking about it as a place to not only hear about people's experiences, but hopefully educate people so that we can reduce those experiences, I think was really important. And again, the data were really telling that it's not, you know, it wasn't just one group saying that they had these experiences, it was really a diverse group based on different partisanship, different, you know, gender experiences, those types of things. Next slide. So after we did all of this work, on March 25th, 2021, our task force did vote to recommend re-establishing the Human Rights Commission. So that was our whole group, that was unanimous, were really important, you know, we thought that was really important. And then we spent the next six months trying to figure out what that might look like. And so then on March, I'm sorry, September 23rd, we did hold a vote around some of these issues. And again, this is just what our task force, given the research that we did, given the presentations from all four of our working groups, these are just some of the things that we thought would be important. One is to adopt legislative language, and that's because, as you all know, as a city, our charter is not, you know, it comes from the state, and so we are beholden to state law. Next slide, I think, yep. So we have to work within the 25 statutes, right? So the commission has the following powers, duties, and functions, and we wanted to promote the purpose of Oklahoma Anti-Discrimination Act 25101. The term sex should be deemed to include without limitation, sexual orientation, gender identity, and/or expression, medical condition due to pregnancy, and marriage to a person of the same sex. The term national origin should be deemed to include limitation without ancestry. And so everything that you see in our recommendations is because of the city staff and the lawyers, obviously, that it's still compliant with those laws, and so it is reflected there. Next slide. But in terms of just what we thought, again, given our research, would be important for a potential HRC to include, we, in terms of membership, we thought at least one of the 11 and 13 appointed members should be a person that practices law. We thought that that would be important. Or is appropriately educated in law, as determined by the mayor. We wanted a more, majority of the members of the commission to be selected from racial, religious, and other recognized minority groups. And again, when I say "we," I mean that's from our task force. The terms, obviously, members would be initially appointed, you know, staggered terms, so that we would have some overlap as we embark on this new, return to this mission, as it were. And that we didn't want people to serve more than two consecutive terms. We know that this would be potentially a big ask, and so we wanted to do that. And then again, on an annual basis, the City Manager shall review the appropriateness of a compliance officer's part-time or full-time status. And so again, you know, as everyone has said, what we hope people understand is that it was deliberative, in that our group came together, we talked, we shared a lot of resources. I'm so thankful for the work of our task force members, our, the city staff, again, but that on their own volunteer time, they did this additional research, and that when we came together, people were engaged and informed about the questions that they asked. I think people really tried to think about what's best for Oklahoma City, and I appreciate that from them, again, over a very long period of time. Next slide.
At this time, we would invite Councilwoman Nice, Councilwoman Hammond, Councilman Stone Cypher, or Stone, to kind of add some feedback or input into this process as fellow stakeholders and task force members of the Human Rights Commission Task Force.
I would just real quickly say that, number one, great presentation, and everything you've said is spot-on. It's been a long process, long, long process, but, yeah, I mean, everyone just continued to work through it, and there was a lot of story sharing and everything else that was extremely valuable. So although it took a long time, you know, I think it's good that it did. I mean, it was very, very in-depth, and I appreciate all of y'all's work on it. Great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stone.
Yeah, I would just echo a lot of that. I think, from my perspective, you know, I was kind of, I think Jane said earlier, it's like, okay, someone put me on this, let's see what happens. But the fact that you all were the driving force to keep this going, just, I think, seeing that leadership from all the chairs, doing that research on their own time, like, I was just kind of like, I'm happy to be along for the ride, and kind of learn about what you all had gone and done research on, to kind of see how can we model this to be sustainable, to be effective, and to, like you said before, bring that, kind of raise the profile of how we, as a city, can be addressing human rights, civil rights. So, yeah, I just really appreciate all of the work of the task force members. And we did, I mean, we had some really long, engaged conversations. I know our, I was on the Legislative and Policy Committee, and I think we probably met for two or three hours one time, just talking through a lot of the specifics, weighing, you know, the pros and cons of certain decisions, and then having that really deliberative voting process, so that there was no ambiguity about what decisions the group was making, and kind of passing along to the next, to the next level. So just really appreciate all of y'all's work, and, yeah, glad to see this all come together.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I'd just echo Todd's comments. The process took some time, it needed to take some time. I think the important thing is, is that we need to recognize and look at that we have federal laws, we have state laws, and we have county courts, the district courts, that will look at all of this with judicial scrutiny. We want to try to avoid state preemption and try to follow Title 25. We don't want to wade into the jurisdiction of the federal government, whether it be the EEOC or otherwise, or wade into the State Attorney General's Office. I think the most important thing that I've heard so far today, and I'm still looking at this, is that the key on emphasizing prompt referral and the key on prompt resolution. And if there is a dispute, and there are two parties that want to sit down and try to resolve that dispute, it shouldn't take 180 days to resolve the dispute. It should have, happen quickly, it should be done efficiently, and it should be, come to a quick conclusion. So those are my comments of what I've seen so far. I look forward to further presentations from you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stone Cypher.
And I'll just close and say again, thank you to everyone who spent their hours in the evening being a part of this effort. And I know at one point towards the end, because we had so much to talk about, we took an extra couple of hours and said we're going to meet again next month, because we knew that was important, and people showed up. So I do want all of us to realize that we all took this step-by-step, vote-by-vote, for us to get where we are with this, this proposal and this presentation that you have just seen and heard. And again, everybody that was a part of this task force, they didn't have to do this work. They did not have to do this work, but they said, we're committed to growing Oklahoma City in a different way to ensure everyone is a part of this process. And that's the best part about being able to have those individual conversations, and also the fact that we were able to agree to disagree, because there was a lot of that. There was a lot of us agreeing to disagree, but at the same time, again, knowing that folks led with their hearts, as well as with following this research and understanding our own experiences pertaining to the difference of human rights and civil rights, because a lot of us had to learn what that was as well, because we all think they are one and the same. And when you think about this process and even understanding what happened in 1996, we are in a new timeframe of 2021, 2022. So I am hoping that we will all take this, this information and move with, with what we've heard, and understand that, again, this was not an effort of a few, this was an effort of many. This was an effort of many. So I thank everyone again for this process, and I also be remiss if I did not thank Mr. Kenny Jordan. Thank you. I did not say your name, but I really appreciate you for being a part of our conversation and helping us and telling us, no, that might not work, but then also saying, this might. So I think that was very important for us to also understand and realize. And ladies, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nice.
Thank you very much.
This is a mayoral task force, so I'd be remiss if I didn't ask you to share a few words.
Absolutely. Well, my gratitude to the co-chairs, to the council members who were on, all of the members, incredibly thorough work. I know you didn't think you were signing up for 18 months of this, but, but that's how things get done, and you dove in and committed to that. And I think it's a great work product, and I think it sets the stage for what I hope is, you know, re-adoption of the Human Rights Commission for the City of Oklahoma City. And I know that Craig and Kenny and everybody will work together in the meetings ahead to bring something forward that can pass the council. Obviously, now it's in the council's purview, but, but I think you have, you have shown what could be with the Human Rights Commission, and I have no doubt that the work of an HRC would be just as methodical and diligent as the work of the task force, and that's what we would hope for. So, again, thank you so much for, I often tell people that persistence and patience is what it takes to get things done in a city hall, and if you have that, you will accomplish great things, and you have, you have bought into that. So I hope that we can reward that with ultimate adoption of this sometime in the weeks ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Hall.
Thank you.
And with that, again, thank you to city staff. I know, Jane, you were honored earlier, and they said, special project, and this was a special project for you and your team, so thank you so much. And to Kenny and Sharita and Ms. Rita and Debbie, who I call the backbone of our government for your administrative and legal guidance and support throughout this process. And with that, we will close unless there's discussion or questions from the other council members.
I've got one, really, it's a request. Dr. Benjamin, you mentioned you all reviewed some case studies. Could you send me the citations of those case studies that you used? And then the speaker that talked about refining the differences between civil rights and human rights, could you send us the information in that regard as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
So the only other things we have on here on the City Manager Reports are the Budget Transfers Report. This is a really exciting report that everyone loves to read. It's just really an administrative document. There's administrative transfers that we'll make within the budget that are authorized, and we just periodically do a report so that you all know what transfers have been made. So if you have any questions on that, myself or staff's glad to answer that, and then we have claims and payroll, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. Item four is Journal of Council Proceedings. We have items A and B we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Item seven, Request for Uncontested Continuances. We have item nine BM, that is BN, and as in Nancy, that will be struck. Eleven D, that'll be deferred to March 15th. Eleven E...
Eleven E that'll be deferred to March 15th. And eleven N that will be, and as in Nancy, that will be deferred to March 1st. What else might you have, Mr. City Manager?
On page 12, starting with nine, I'm sorry, item 11A, this is PC 10770, and that's going to be deferred to March 15th. Item 11B is PUD 1856, that'll be deferred to March 1st. And then item 11G is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. We're working on a process to make some changes in how these will come to council, still working through that, but this item just needs to be deferred to March the 1st. Then on page 14, under item 11L1, this is Unsecured Structures. All of these items that I list will be stricken from the agenda. Item B 3311, North Blackwelder Avenue, the owner is secured. Item H 1005, North Quapaw Avenue, the owner is secured. Item I 1225, North Rockwell Avenue, the owner is secured. Item K 652, Southeast 20th Street, the owner is secured. Item L 813, Southwest 24th Street, the owner is secured. Item P 3136, Southwest 28th Street, the owner is secured. Item U 609, Northwest 114th Street, the owner is secured. Then under item 11M1, this is also on page 14, under abandoned buildings, these will all be stricken from the agenda. Item B 3311, North Blackwelder Avenue, the owner is secured. Item E 1225, North Rockwell Avenue, the owner is secured. Item F 1005, North Quapaw Avenue, the owner has secured. And item H 1113, Northeast 38th Street, the owner has secured. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Item seven is Revocable Permits and Events. There are none today, so we will recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through I, we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we will, actually Councilman Cooper is here. Was he recorded?
No, I hit second and thought that was.
All right, there we go. Passes unanimously. All right, now we'll adjourn OC MFA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. All we have is claims and payroll, but we'll take a vote on that anyways in the interest of being thorough. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OC PPA, reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on item nine, the Consent Docket. We have scheduled presentations for item Z, item BO, and that is it. And item BN was previously struck. Is there an item?
I'm sorry, I have two more that I need to, we're going to do a presentation on BR and BS.
Okay.
This is on our upcoming bond sale, and I didn't have that on our list, so I need to, we'll have a presentation on that as well.
Okay. Is there any other item that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate comment or a separate vote?
Yes, I'd like to pull out item W potentially for a deferral. I, this is an item that came from our, I can never remember the full name of the board, so I'm just going to say the Better Streets Safer City Board. And I know my representative had some concerns and questions about it as well as another, so I'd really like a chance to go into more depth and hear more from staff, if we can do that, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, and then I have a couple items I'd like to either pull out for separate votes or hear more on. So first, I would like to defer item 9X, similar to W. I feel like there's some more discussion that needs to happen with city staff and with Councilor Hammond and myself in terms of this pretty large project, exciting project, but large. So yeah, I'd like to defer that one for sure. And then I'd like to hear more about AB, as in boy. And then, uh, streetscapes, there we go. AV.
A what was that?
V as in Victor, AV. And I said AX and then AY.
Okay. That it?
And then, will there be anyone speaking to CB and CC?
We didn't have anything scheduled.
So I'd like that. And relatedly, I think it makes, at least in my mind, it makes a lot of sense that going forward, I would request any time a MAPS 4 operating project comes to council, I feel like a presentation or some sort of at least comments on it are important. And the reason I feel that way is not just for my own personal interest, but, you know, we heard a lot today about these, we'll call them very troubling last 18 months to two years. A lot has happened and I believe very strongly that for many of our residents, arguably a majority of our residents, a lot of what we put in motion with MAPS 4 has probably slip-slided from their memory. And there's so much good in MAPS 4. And in fact, not just good, but necessary in like mental health, you know, I've spoken about this for months now, that's top of mind for so many people. And I think a lot of our residents need to know what's coming. And I think this is, these, these moments of operating contracts, et cetera, provide us an opportunity to keep them updated. So that would be my request going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So then we'll take.
Help, please.
Yes.
Item CD, can we, I would like some, just for clarification for the public to understand what's happening with that.
Okay. Okay, well, if that's it, we'll take them in order, which means we'll start with item W, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yeah, I'd like to motion to defer that item, just for two weeks, I think should be fine.
All right. So this is a motion to defer item 9W for two weeks.
Councilwoman, may I ask a follow-up on that? Or is that?
Yeah.
Or is that?
Sure.
Okay. I agree. I was, I'm very troubled by this item in fact, because my, my person was the other person.
Yes.
Will we be able to meet with city staff to discuss?
Yeah, that's my hope is to get a meeting set up with staff. And it, maybe it makes sense to have both W and X be part of that, and maybe both of us can be, and anyone else who wants. But I know your board member was the other one who expressed concern, so, but I think hopefully we should be able to do that in the next two weeks and.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. And then, I, I don't know the answer to this, it's something I raised a few weeks ago. To, it's for my, the counselors who don't represent the urban core, I think we're really going to need your help on this because once more, we're in a position where the conversation is, what are we prioritizing here? Are we prioritizing? And I heard, I, last night when I finished teaching, I literally watched the presentation from this meeting. And the, the improvement, there were two options, and one of the options, both of the options improve the travel time for a car on the street, both options do. One option however, prioritizes a little bit more the walkability, the wa, I don't know, the walkability along automobile alley, along, you know, plenty mercantile and all the different shops and restaurants and bars that are along that stretch. The one that they're trying to put forth in front of us is the one that prioritizes even a faster car time and the car. And I'm really worried about that because walkability, when they surveyed the stakeholders, walkability was the priority for like 70-something percent of the people in, in that outreach. And so I'm worried that what's going to happen is the same thing that keeps happening where we're going to vote in a way where it's going to prioritize the people who live along the peripheral parts of our city but work downtown and not necessarily the people who live downtown and on a day-to-day basis are going to automobile alley. And so I don't know what could happen between now and a deferral where we're also able to present what we learned from staff with you all to better educate you so that we're not in this great debate on the horseshoe in a couple of weeks and then it just defaults to the same old, same old. So I don't know what's possible, so City Man, I mean, maybe help us think through that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can set up to have the briefing with you all first so that you get to hear that. We can do small group briefings, you know, obviously we have stable old quorum, but we can provide information that comes out of those. And otherwise, the communication between the councils individually really may be part of what would help to address, like you share your concerns and be able to talk with council members individually.
Yeah, I don't know, Councilwoman Hammond, just if that works for you. It's just that when I watched that vote happen on the Keneeb Board, it was two, two of the people, it was my council, my representative and Joe Best's representative, and it struck me that once more, it was the people who actually live and walk and bike down here and drive down here. Like my friend Kim, she's Joe Best's representative, and Kim does all of the above. She bikes, she walks, she drives, like her husband loves cars in a way that annoys me in fact. Like he could tell you everything about a sports car, but they get it, they understand this. And I, I want to get this right for automobile alley. I really do.
Okay, so we are on a deferral motion for item W. It has a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now item X, Councilman Cooper, and I get the impression you wish to defer this.
Yes, please.
To defer two weeks.
Uh, yeah, two weeks. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Okay, those items are deferred. I want to back up real quick. We've had a resident sign up to speak on item 9N, if I'm reading this correctly. So that's Michael Washington.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Thank you, that is him. Well, 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 my illustrious, somewhat familiar face is in this horseshoe setting here. I do want to speak very briefly, I believe he in his, has to do with the filming industry. The last time I was here, this guy come up here with this fanciful, half-one-sided, only my people fit all type of mentality here, meaning his own people, that he was had an idea of putting something together regarding a joint agreement with the, let me make sure I'm on the right one, because y'all kind of took me off guard here on the quick, called me up that quick. Y'all done, I know I still have a little bit of time. Oh, yes. Oh, this is median income, okay, see, y'all got, y'all confused me. All right, to be introduced here in Washington, but, okay, now here we are. Why is it that the northeast side of Oklahoma City continually, now I'm on the right one, Mayor, I'm on the right one?
Uh, you signed up for item 9N. Item 9N is a planning case at 1102 Northeast 6.
That's it, yeah, I said, I'm on the right one, thank you. I think I'm still a little sleepy after that Super Bowl. Well, now, back to important business. Why is it every time that you people feel it's necessary to come over to squander and disregard my northeast side of Oklahoma City? I'm tired of this fanciful, this false, this flagrant disregard and disrespect for where I live. You want to do all these things, you don't consult me. The deputy sheriff, basically, somebody speaking of the northeast side. Whatever goes on in or out, people need to talk to me first. You need to quit dissolving our residential neighborhoods for some businesses to recognize the rich, opulent wealthy who decided they want to come in and they want the northeast side back. Hell, you shouldn't have moved out in the first doggone place. That's right, you thought you leave me on the northeast side because you thought it's going to be so delepid and so decrepit, useless, abusive, unknown, unrecognized, but now you want it back. Why do you want it back? Because you realize Frontier City is over there. You realize Remington Park is there. You realize that the hospital is over there. You realize that Highway I-35 is over there. Why drive way across from Northwest Side where baby boy, we can be already over here? That's why I'm tired of it. And I'm not tolerating it any longer. For right now, let me say to each and every one of you today, you will be listening to my voice. I've been so busy, I'm sure all of you may know, I've been so busy with other projects, but now I've redirected my attention here and I'm going to start coming back a little bit more regularly than what I have been. Believe me, y'all, I miss all of y'all, because I know it's y'all can make the changes that I'm looking for. The recommendations to the higher-ups. I, myself, oh, by the way, Mayor, I'm sorry, I should have congratulated you for your win, sir.
30 seconds, please.
I'm sorry.
30 seconds.
Yes, ma'am. You say 300 minutes more?
No.
But let me say in closing, talk to me, recognize me, and I will recognize you for who you are. Disown me, disregard me, I in turn, without question mark, will give it back to you, straight uncut. Thank y'all very much, 30 seconds is here.
Thank you. Okay, we have a.
Hold on. Normally I don't, I let it go, but I need to give a point of clarification that first, this is being introduced, and two, instead of assuming what this may or may not be, it might be best to actually talk to the folks, because you might be surprised, they look like you, that are doing this, and to benefit the community. So I would, I would suggest, instead of saying people need to talk to you, that you go out and do your research and, and find out what's actually happening. And I'm always here to answer any questions that you have, just be mindful of that, and we can move on to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you. Item Z has a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So Eric's going to give us a quick update. We do these regularly as we make adjustments on, it's the Better Streets Safer City Committee, and I know we have a formal name there, but it's on the Better Streets Sales Tax. And I'll let Eric give us a quick update on the changes that are proposed in this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Eric Quinger, Public Works Director. So the item that you have under your agenda today is the next update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Implementation Plan. We actually took action on this as a city council when the council decided to use $9 million of general fund for future street resurfacing. You'd asked the advisory board to consider locations, and they were presented a couple of options. And the option that they selected was actually in excess of $9 million. They selected an option that used a prioritization of the highest priority streets throughout Oklahoma City, and the total for that was 13.6 million. So what this implementation plan amendment does is it actually adds $4.6 million out of their resurfacing budget to the $9 million that was provided by the city council to enable those eight projects to move forward. So your consideration today is for approving this so that we can move forward with those eight priority resurfacing projects.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay. And there's a resident who's signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Now, which one is that, Mayor? I'm, I'm still asleep.
Item Z.
Oh, item Z. Hey, I got him on the jury. I love this. Make sure you count my time, man, please. Item Z, let me go back, what was Z, where's Z at? What's Z talking about? Let's see what Z is talking about here.
It's up there, the clock's against down.
N O P Q R S T U. Okay, let me read for the audience. Resolution adopting February 2022 update to the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan as recommended by the Community and Neighborhood Enhancement Advisory Board and adding individual project budget sheets for previously approved projects in accordance with the February 22 update plan. All words seem to be indicated here, recognized. All words seem to be indicated here, recognized. I don't remember approving of or being a part of any of this stuff. Why is it always I'm the last to learn about things only when I come to a city council meeting? And if there has been publications on them, I'm a pretty avid reader myself. I consult various implied materials on whatever level it may be, being a writer of some sorts. So I know to do my own investigation and research and work. Because this is a fact, and obviously designed to cripple my understanding of what's going on until I'm here, we need to look at this. I'm always for an improvement, an advancement, an elevation of society as a whole, but what I have a problem, it is just excluding me and not having me in the process of it, because I am somebody. I refuse to be left out, chartered, and told something later on. Advisory committees, really? I love this collective effort here, mind you, but let me say once again, we need to stop, we need to see who I am. Every one of you know I'm somebody important, I'm not liked, because I don't take bull crap around from nobody. You know that, don't we? That's right. I'm not big bad, oh, no, I'm a threat to anyone, anytime I appear, but I will not accept you disregarding me.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thank you, 30 seconds, show me jumping, that's when I'm speaking, thank you, ma'am. Now then, as I move toward that conclusive state, let me say that being a black man here in the Western Hemisphere of white race is America, you will recognize my black race for who we are, because without me, you wouldn't be anything. And I don't mean it disrespectfully, because I brought you brought me over to raise up your cattle, your sugarcane, coffee, tobacco, cotton, rice, me, my people, let my people go, thank you.
I do have a question to Mr. Winger. As we're looking at this resurfacing, and I know I've raised this question before pertaining to some of our projects that we do, one of the projects that I know that is included in this is East Wilshire Boulevard from Broadway Extension to Kelly Avenue, and I know I've asked this once before, but I am curious to know what kind of resolve or how can we look at incorporating with this street resurfacing some type of sidewalk project? What would that look like? Who can we still bring to the table? And how can we look at working through this particular street area? And the reason I raise that question is, one, this particular community, I would say, is in a food desert, and also there are no amenities that are close to them, so we have folks walking in the street, in particular, to go across the interstate in order for them to walk on sidewalks to get to the local 7-Eleven. And I would, I really think there's a way for us to do some justice with this resurfacing project that can also include some sidewalks or some type of way to ensure that not only when this road gets resurfaced, we have safety measures in place, because right now, that's where our residents are walking.
So with any of our street resurfacing projects, one of the things that we are required to do is if there's an existing sidewalk, we do have to bring it up to current ADA standards. So if there are any walks or crossings or ramps or things that are noncompliant as a part of this location, we would upgrade those as a part of the resurfacing project. But unfortunately, as a part of Better Streets, we did have the five different project categories that received their individual budgets that included the resurfacing. There was also a project category for sidewalks, trails, bike, and street enhancement. So we had some sidewalk monies that were identified in Better Streets, Safer City, and we're still executing those projects. I don't believe there's a location for this to be included in that at the moment, but it is something that we can look at with BikeWalk, and I'm happy to work with the Planning Department to see what options we have for enhancing pedestrian activity here. But as a part of the resurfacing, it won't be possible with the budget, and it is a part of the street resurfacing project.
Okay, thank you. Again, the reason I ask, I know BikeWalk could be some of the solution, but I do believe if we have funds from this Enhancement Program Project Implementation Plan, as far as the Better Streets, Safer City Advisory Board for that sidewalk allocation, it seems as if it would just be a no-brainer to do that, so I will be in touch to talk through that. Thank you very much.
Okay, item AB, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, and also, I did a little bit more close reading here. I think we need to pull item Y for a separate vote because of my employment with UCO.
Okay.
I think we just caught that.
All right, sure. Why don't you step out, and we'll just do it right now?
Thank you.
All right, so pulling out item Y for a separate vote, if there'd be a motion and a second on that. Motion and a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously, all right. If Councilman Cooper isn't sounding my voice, okay, very good. Now, you wanted to talk about item AB.
Update for residents, just to kind of hear a little bit more about what's, the drainage improvements coming to the area.
Thank you, Councilman. So this item is the final plans and the specifications for a drainage enhancement project that's in the vicinity of Northwest 63rd and Northwest 56th and Western. The actual improvements will help remediate some of the flooding that has occurred there over the previous years. We've gone through a process of working with property owners and obtaining necessary easements, but with the final plans being presented to the council today, we are prepared to proceed on the $1.1 million project. The bid date would be March 9. Upon receipt of those bids, we would bring those back to the council for consideration and approval before we begin work, assuming that we do get a bid that we can receive. Work would begin this spring, and it would be completed by this fall.
That's great. I think they'll very much look forward to that, and we appreciate your work over there. Thank you.
All right, then we have item AV, as in Victor, Councilman Cooper.
Wait, wait, I signed up to speak, just kidding.
No, you did not. AV, Councilman Cooper?
Yes, I had not, I just wanted to hear an update on this one, because I, well, go ahead, I'll just leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Councilman. Item AV is an amendment to the Contract for Engineering Services for the Walker Street Enhancement Project. This is a project that's a part of our Better Streets, Safer City program that's underway. We do actually have the need to increase some of the irrigation items that are on the project that will help provide electricity to those irrigation systems. This is also the project that's going to provide some rain gardens that we've discussed previously at Northwest 28th and Northwest 29th Streets as a part of that project. So the engineering amendment today will allow us to complete that design. We're looking to actually begin construction on this project once we have the final plans in hand, summer of '22 and finish in the spring of 2023.
So while I am very familiar with the uptown conversation and the Paseo conversation with their respective street enhancement projects, I knew some of the Walker one, just based on our previous conversations, but I didn't realize we had made some kind of final decisions on some things. So I think that was kind of my wanting to hear a little bit more here today, so I think this kind of takes care of that. Do we have a kind of layout now? Because I remember the last time you and I spoke, there was still some, we didn't know budget limitations in terms of how far, for instance, we were going to be able to go from 23rd maybe up to 36th, or if it was 30th. Were both sides of the roads going to have sidewalks, these sorts of things? Do we have kind of a better understanding of that now?
So the engineer continues to work through the plans and the available budget. We are going to be able to make the connection clear to 36th Street at least on one side of the roadway. On the opposite side of the roadway, add alternates are planned as a part of the bid so that if we have available funds at the time of bidding, we'll provide the sidewalks on the other side of the roadway as well, on the other side of Walker. But until those bids are received, we're not going to know that for sure, but it's being included in the design to make that a possibility just based on the budget.
Okay. So that would be the next step, would be receiving the bids, right?
So the item today is just an engineering amendment to allow the engineer to complete the design. The next item will be, we'll bring the final plans and specifications back to the council to advertise it for bids, but we're not quite there yet. We'll finish the design this spring and bring the final plans back for consideration.
Wonderful. So I'd like to make sure when you and I and Director Butler have our monthly meetings that I get the chance to see these recommendations?
Yes, be happy to meet with you before we bring the plans back and make sure that there's no questions on the project.
That's wonderful. That's it for now, thank you.
Did you cover, you also have AX and AY, did you guys, why don't you just keep up the dialogue?
Well, you know, I heard a little bit of a grunting right there, but, you know, here's the deal. The, when the people voted for me, they asked me for stewardship over these items, and what I'm, the reason why I'm asking about these two in particular is because these two updates, I'm just now seeing these, and I think there should have been a moment where I got to hear about them a little bit earlier, and so that's why I'm bringing them right now. And usually, you know, Director Winger and Butler are really good about having these sort of conversations with me, it's just, the Portland one, for instance, some of the changes that they're proposing here, like, I didn't learn about these changes until I saw this agenda on Friday. Like, the signalization changes between 27th and 31st. I read this agenda, and that's the first time I learned about that. And so during a council briefing meeting with Debbie Martin is where I got to find out about that, that we had an opportunity, I think, to learn about that earlier, and we didn't. And that's the same with the Paseo one as well. And I guess what I'm saying is there needs to be, there's opportunity for better communication with me as the councilperson who is providing stewardship over these projects. And again, normally, Director Winger and Butler just really excel at this, I don't know how it happened that these two items, that didn't happen. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to be mean, I'm not trying to, you know, cast aspersions, I'm just saying, like, this was something that I would have liked to have known about a little bit sooner. So if you wouldn't mind speaking to what they are, please, that would be helpful.
No, I'm happy to update on item AX. AX is also an engineering amendment for the engineer on the North Portland Avenue, this is 23rd to 36th Street. We did previously provide a plumber report to this council, and one of the items that was included in the report, but it was not eligible or it wasn't included in the funding that was part of that, was additional intersection enhancements at Northwest 27th. So we had proposed a street enhancement project that met all of the needs based on the available budget at the time of the plumber report, but we have now located the opportunity with funding to actually complete the Northwest 27th street enhancements, and we're now wanting to include them in the project to be put into the final plans and specifications. So the final plans have not yet been presented to this council since the design is still underway. It is also one that we're hoping to finish this spring, and we'd be bringing those plans and specs back to this council for consideration. If all goes well and this amendment's approved, we'll include the 27th Street intersection. The project could begin as early as summer of '22 and finish in the summer of '23. So we're adding some things that were included in the plumber report that weren't previously funded.
That's good news. And then the Paseo, please.
Yeah, happy to also update on Paseo. And Paseo and Walker, which we just updated on, are actually going to be bid simultaneously, so we have the opportunity to bid those projects together, and we've been coordinating very closely with the district, making sure that we avoid any of their major events that are in the area. So Paseo specifically, this is amendment three to that engineering contract. And again, we've provided the plumber report, we just have not provided the final plans and specifications at this time. As the engineer was working through the final plans and the details, getting it ready to bid, we identified the need for some additional ADA parking spaces. The need was always there, we just didn't know exactly where to place all of those. They've worked very closely with some of the property owners in the area, they've identified some new space that can accommodate these ADA spaces, and so this engineering amendment is going to take advantage of a small parking lot to provide the necessary improvements. We're simply adding that work into the engineering contract to make that complete before the plans are finalized.
This is, this, all good news. I just want to, I want to take just a couple more moments here, just to clarify why this stuff matters so much to me. When these sort, what I'm requesting is that when these sorts of kind of structural changes to one of these projects is going to occur, I, as the councilperson, would like to know about them. The reason why I'd like to know about them, not just the stewardship responsibilities that the constituents have placed in me, but I served on COPPA prior to taking the seat. And when I served on COPPA prior to taking the seat, I, for year after year after year, went to conferences with COPPA that talked about the specifics of placemaking projects like these. I have opinions about these things. My constituents have opinions about these things. I am not a rubber stamp. I am not going to just approve things that come to me, and I think a dialogue, and we have always been really good about that, Director Winger and Director Butler especially, because we need on a month-to-month basis to go over the different projects in our board, for our council. I think what was frustrating to me this time is that some of these changes, and I can't remember a time where this was kind of like this before, but these changes just appeared on the agenda on Friday, I learned about them on Friday, and then, and now, in this brief amount of time was all I had to really dig into whether or not these were the best fit for those areas. And maybe they are, I suspect they are, but I feel like as the councilperson, I should at least be part of that conversation. And so that's, that was my, I, that was my frustration in seeing these things here in this way. So I appreciate that. I think we'll be fine with them going forward, because I think we'll be able to do this process a little bit better going forward, but I keep looking at the City Manager because I feel like as the management position, this is a kind of role for you as well. And please, Director Winger, please don't take this as any sort of personal, you know, animosity, I'm just frustrated by the process here, so, thank you.
Okay, that concludes what you wanted to talk about with AX and AY, right, Councilman Cooper? Okay, all right, backing up, we have a resident who signed to speak on AK, Michael Washington.
AK, AK. What is the meaning of AK? Well, let me tell y'all something. I didn't get a chance to listen to the order, change of order, however, let me just say, since I'm here on the subject and topic, to have begun the process, you get a comma version of me this time, to have begun the process of recognizing a woman who has been profoundly directly involved in the lives of many people since her engagement in city government, I think it is a remarkable feat and task in reality, because black folks will get a lot of stuff named after them for their great works and contributions. As a matter of fact, y'all might think this is an off-the-shore thought here, but I'm looking for my statue one of these days. No laughs up there. But it's real. You know what, I'm not a terrible bad guy. And when you do things like this to recognize people who makes a difference, of people of color that is, I kind of have to cling toward listening to you further, because you are willing to talk about it. But more than just talk, we need some positive results to follow thereafter. And I say to you again, naming her now, Willa Johnson was very unique in her own light, as every one of you are. And maybe one of these days you'll have somebody naming something after you, if you haven't already. Well, now, my grandson do, you know, have a little painting of me, so, that he did, y'all come on, let me get ready to close here. So again, I haven't seen this change order, but at the same time, I believe, I hope it's still designed to, that the center would be, it's nice that the center would be completed as projected, I'm just hoping since they said change order. And with that, I guess I'll get ready to close, but let me say one thing, 30 seconds yet, ma'am?
Yes.
Well, let me say, it is indeed an honor to be able to go Well, let me say, it is indeed an honor to be able to go into a community center, recognize, and I hope therein, that there is something inside which gives us a chronological history of how it all started. Let me go, y'all, but it's been wonderful. I'll be back.
And to the point, I'm actually glad he brought that up. And the only reason I say that is because it also says on here, Northeast Fourth Street and Martin Luther King Avenue. I just want to correct that this address for this particular area is 900 Frederick Douglass Boulevard. So I'm not quite sure why Northeast Fourth and MLK was, was on there.
Okay. Now we're at item BO. There's a presentation.
Yes, Kenton Sutil, Assistant City Manager, is here to present an update on the amendments that have been proposed in this contact from some of the comments that we had and the interaction that we had previously at council, and to let us know some of the process that we're using to go forward.
Good morning. Kenton Sutil, Assistant City Manager. Just want to point out a couple of things on this. Item BN that was stricken, the reason we did that, we brought back item BO that had, it also had the amendment that BN had last time, which was the increase to the minority small business program. So I just want to make sure and be clear that that change is also in item BO, but we brought back a different item because we also had some additional changes after the discussion that we had at council last time. And also after some initial discussions we've had with some of our nonprofit partners. In addition to the, you know, continuing to have the minority small business program increase that was amended last time, it also provides the ability to have loans and grants for small businesses and nonprofits. And we also made sure to clarify that all of the programs were available to nonprofits as well as for-profit businesses. I will say that we are continuing to have some of the outreach that has been requested with, with nonprofits. We've got a very large list, working with some of our partners, and we are in the process, you know, Aubrey and myself and the Alliance staff are working on a process to reach out further and get more information. But we have had some discussions with certain nonprofits. As a reminder, this one, the contract, it hires the Alliance to create a plan and a program for the small business and nonprofit programs. And as you recall, we have those really categorized into three things, job training and workforce development, upscaling, minority small business support and technical assistance, and then the small business and nonprofit support programs. And so those are really, just as a reminder, the main categories there. Again, the program, including all the eligibility requirements, the details of those things have to be approved by the city manager's office. And with, we will also make sure we provide this information to you all as it's ready. But we would recommend approval of this today so that we can get started on the process. There's a lot to do on this and we'll continue to keep you all in the loop as we move forward.
I just have a question before we continue. And I don't know if we're at that part yet for questions. But I'm reading through the, the ARPA contract in the compensation piece, 2.1 on page four. I'd just like a definition of, of what this management fee consists of, 1.5 million dollars, and where that is, where all of those funds will be used for us to say, yes, as a city to, for that cost of compensation. But if that needs to come after we finish continuing the discussion, I'm happy to have that question entertained.
No, I can go ahead and take that. Appreciate the question. So really, it's just, think of it as the administration. So even though the contract is a large dollar amount, 20 million, 250,000 of that, those are the funds that would be put out into the community in these programs, to small businesses, to nonprofits, to the training programs. The 1.5 is really the overhead costs of providing those programs. That's what the Alliance will help fund, some of their additional staffing, some of the just overhead and things like that. And if you look at that on a percentage basis, it's less than seven and a half percent of the program funds that are being put out there. I don't know if that answers your question or if you'd like any more information on it.
Yes, I'm just curious, because I understand, as you said, contracting out maybe some of those positions, is it? Or maybe my question is, as far as staffing is concerned, what that would look like and how we can ensure that even with that, we have representation for all of these diverse areas where we're going to need that type of help and questions answered. Because to me, if we're going to pay 1.5 for that, that, that's what we need. And not just for overhead costs, but actual implementation and to have some understanding and knowledge that it's going to be staffed with people that can actually help instead of folks that, again, have fallen through the threshold that they weren't able to receive any type of help or in or compensation pertaining to their business or nonprofit.
And Kathy, you can answer some questions about, you know, what sort of costs and things. But I also want to remind that this program's a little different than CARES and that it's over a longer period of time. This will go through 2024 and potentially could even go beyond that to 2026. So there is a time component on this as well, but I don't know if you have any other...
Yeah, we will be hiring some staff positions in-house to provide the day-to-day administration for the program. But we also plan to contract out with a wide variety of entities and organizations, especially to help us get the word out, engage with the community. So organizations like the Black Chamber, the Asian District, all of those commercial districts could be part of our network of people that we use to help administer this program. I don't anticipate having a large number of staff as a part of the Alliance team, but we, we will be looking to potentially hire some business consultants or business advisors to, to provide that one-on-one case management. Or we will be looking for an entity, an organization that already does that, that we can contract with, like Community Action Agency, maybe some of the VOTAC, local VOTAC, career tech schools.
Okay. And to 2.2, as I see managed, management fee payment, I just want to understand, but just based off of what the Assistant City Manager said, that this is going to take, that the total management fee shall not exceed 1.5? So does that mean we're going to come back later and ask for this to be amended for an additional amount? Or are we certain that 1.5 is going to be the final ask as far as compensation for this program?
We don't anticipate asking for any additional administrative fees.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. We have a resident who signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
Y'all got me kind of interested. I know I ain't got for three minutes. Why not? I see that a lot of y'all have been listening to me, and I'm sure all of you have to agree, years ago, I'm the one that got to talk about nonprofits being included into this for-profit buffoonery that's going on, for-profit buffoonery that's going on. Now then, let me say one thing, ma'am. You talked about in-house hiring. I want you to know that my organization has been pretty quiet. We hadn't been asking for much of anything. I've been pushing the envelope for others. But now that it's changed, now that I know this project is about to be developed, we're not going to ask for yours, Bobby, Harry or Joe's, just ours. And we will refuse to be denied, as it's not going anywhere. It's simple as that. You don't need me faking with you. Simple as that. It's not going anywhere, nowhere fast, straight up. Now then, you speak about 1.5 million for overhead costs, managing and so forth and so on. Now, we all know that it coming back, very relevant question, by the way, Madam Councilwoman. We know all, everything is never just paying straight out, don't we? Oh, we didn't consider having to build a little house here over here where Bobby can run up under it. We forgot to tell y'all that ceiling might leak if too many people run across the floor too much. Okay. But once again, I would like, ma'am, I don't care about not being like, you know, I'm not, I've never won a popularity contest and don't even intend to start it. Okay? So let's understand that. All right. Now, so what I am saying then, ma'am, is that I'd like to be in this in-house hiring. I'd like to be part of that staff. And as y'all just stated, y'all got nonprofits that you already work with. I started, almost finished. You gonna know whether you exclude me, because that's called discrimination. All right? It's not based upon whether you like somebody or not, because it's not your money. Huh? It's a citizen's money. The same money that I buy candy bar and pay taxes on, or when I drive my car. That's right. Pull them pants, something tighten them up there. That's right. I'm not here to be friends or nice than anybody. But I will do one thing for you, and this is an actual fact.
Thirty seconds, please.
See, you know, we're going to corn that phrase, thirty seconds. I'm, I'm thinking. But let me say this here, y'all. One thing I want to say in closing, because my seconds are ticking down, this one I get started, and I'm long-winded. One thing you can say to yourself, that if there were ever a need, a physical need, an emergency, guess what? My worst enemy's going to get my help, because thus said to the Lord, I must give back. Thank y'all again. It's, it's been wonderful.
Okay, we have presentations on items BR and BS.
Yes, sir. It's actually BQ, BR and BS. I missed, spoke on that. There's three items with this, and it starts the process for the bond sale to happen this spring. So I'll let Brent Bryant, our finance director, give a presentation on...
Brent Bryant, Finance Director, BQ, BR and BS. The first one is the, restart the process for the refunding of the 2012 bonds. Per our debt management policy, when we go out to do refund bonds, we have to get a minimum of 3% present value savings. We anticipate about a 15.8% present value savings going out and refunding approximately $33.5 million worth of bonds, which will actually save us $5.3 million over the next 10 years. Then the second item is authorizing the sale of our 2022 general obligation bond. The amount is $110 million. And of that $110 million, 89 million is going towards streets. With this $110 million, we will be right at, we have spent, we've issued $393 million to date, out of the 967 million that was approved by our residents back in 2017. So we're right at the halfway mark with this issue of issuing all of our authorization. Today, this resolution authorizes the sale and staff will begin, as they've already begun the process of putting the preliminary official statements together and doing all of the necessary things we need to do to get these bonds issued. We anticipate coming back to you on the 29th of March, where we'll actually do a competitive sale. It'll be at 8:30 on the 29th. And I need all of you to be here, please. So please do that. Secondly, the third one is an ordinance that's being introduced related to the sale of the bonds, of the $110 million worth of bonds. I need at least five of you here next week on the 15th, actually on the 15th of March, so we can have our second public hearing. And then the sale of bonds, like I said, it'll be on March 29th. And I have all of our team here today. I have Assistant Finance Director Angela Pierce, our debt manager, Mike Baskin, our financial advisors are here, along with our bond counsel. So if you have any technical questions, I think we might be able to get them answered today. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have CB and CC, Councilman Cooper. Not finally, there's something after that, too.
Is Mr. Todd here? Would he be our person?
He is not. Jackson Cotton with ADG is here, and he will give us an update on these RFPs that are going out for these operator contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, counsel. Yeah, I'm actually filling in for Mr. Todd a little bit today. He had a close family member having surgery, so he apologizes for not being here. So we, we actually do have the presentations that we provided the board just a week ago on these. And so I will go through these very quickly. I know you guys have a lot of other business to do, but I think I can hit the high points here and get us through this pretty quick. So we, the, the first one that we, we have here, and these presentations are very similar, because they are at kind of the same point in the process. This first one is for the first mental health crisis center. And so you see the implementation plan there. I do not know what's going on with this clicker. First, the first, the first mental health crisis center, you can see the, the process here that we follow, all this, the phases of work that you see in the slide are very typical for all of the projects. We, we go through an operator selection process, we select a design team, we design the project and we build it. And so really, the, the presentation that we brought here this morning is really just about the operator selection and agreement part of the project. And so this is really just the gray bar on this exhibit. Really, the, the work in terms of selecting an operator is really divided into kind of three primary phases. And so we have advertisement, where we advertise for potential respondents, potential operators for the facilities. We go through a selection process, and then there's really just development of the agreement. So there are a lot of places where the subcommittee and the board and city council will be involved in this process. And so I, I really just want to clarify, I guess for everyone, really, we're very early in this process. This is just the RFP. So this is really just to get council's authorization to advertise this and see who's out there that may potentially want to operate this facility. So the, the format of the RFP, I, I'm not sure if it's provided in your packet or not, but the format is very similar to the other operator RFPs that we release. We've got a list here that lists all the specific requirements. There's always kind of a bit of background on the project. There's a section that lists general requirements. We obviously identify all the submittal requirements that are required of the respondent in terms of what they provide to the city. And then there's also a, a lot of language in the back of the operator RFP, which is really giving any potential respondents a lot of information on specific contract terms that will likely be required by, on the part of the city. And so we provide that information. Just real briefly, as you mentioned, some people have forgotten the projects that we're in MAPS-4. So just real briefly, I'll remind everybody, two mental health crisis centers are included in the MAPS-4 program, and so $11 million total. This RFP that we are advertising or hoping to advertise is just for the first of two crisis centers. And so we're looking for an operating partner. And we would like to bring that operating partner on soon so that they can participate in, in the design of the facility and planning of the facility. The, the facility in itself is intended to help stabilize and care for people who are experiencing a mental health crisis. And so we have a few notes here. You know, a lot of times people can, are, would voluntarily be admitted. A lot of times, though, it does involve either family members, caretakers, law enforcement, or local hospitals. And so that's identified in the RFP. We have spent a lot of time at the crisis center that's out on General Pershing Boulevard. You might hear it referred to as the North Care Facility. It's operated by the Department of Mental Health. And so you see here some specifics of that facility. It, you know, it has a 16-bed inpatient crisis center. The number of beds is stipulated by some 1960s federal legislature. And so there's a requirement in the number of beds that we can provide. And so we've just included here some of the things that you see programmatically when you go and look at that facility. And so it is really, I think as we were preparing this, it was considered to be really the model for how we want the others to look. Some, just some general information that we require, that we mentioned in the RFP, we obviously would like an operator that has experience with similar facilities or related experience. We'd like for them to be able to demonstrate that to the city. I don't know that I really need to get into a lot of detail on the rest of this. We, obviously, the city would welcome proposals from either a single provider or if they're, if it's a consortium of some kind, they have to be, submit as a common, under a common legal entity so that the city can contract with them. So that's mentioned in the RFP. We have been very specific in the RFP in terms of wanting potential respondents to help us identify the appropriate locations for the facilities. Those have not been determined yet. We feel like that's a really important conversation. We'd like to have them at the table as we're kind of thinking through that. And then we've included here in the RFP as well, just some language from the original resolution, which explains the intent of council, the identification of operational funding from a non-municipal source. There's some language in the resolution about the need to develop an operating agreement. And so there's some mention of that in the RFP as well. In terms of submittal requirements, these are very typical to some of the other RFPs that we've sent out. I, I don't know that I need to go into a lot of detail. Probably one of the more important things is we do require that respondents provide a five-year business plan. And so that gives us an, an understanding of how they're funded, what their, their operational expenses will be and, and all of those sorts of things. And so that's a really important component. The evaluation criteria closely follows what's required in terms of submittal, of the submittal. The last slide that I have here is really just anticipated schedule, and so we... The last slide that I have here is really just anticipated schedule, and so we had a little bit of a snowstorm first week of February, so the date at the top of this slide is actually wrong. It was approved by the board last week on the 9th. But obviously, the rest of the dates there are appropriate. So if council approves this today, and we are able to advertise, we begin that advertisement tomorrow. We would have a pre-proposal conference on the 9th, on March 9th, and then we would receive the letters of interest towards the end of March, go through the selection process in April and May. And so that's really kind of it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to take any questions on this one. I'm going to tell you the other presentation is very similar, and so probably don't need to go through it in quite as much detail. Okay. Any other questions before I move on to the next one?
Are we really all going to wave him hand just because he points? No. No, you're not even signed up for this item. Move on.
Okay.
Mr. Washington?
I'm signed up. I gave it the letter.
You are absolutely not. Move on, sir.
Thank you. I'll be fast about this one. This is a very, very similar presentation. So obviously, for this one, we're looking at the restoration center, not the mental health crisis center. And so this is a little bit larger project, $22 million. Same primary phases of work. We're obviously at the same point in this process, trying to get the RFP out on the street for potential operators. I'm just going to click through these pretty quick. The thing about the restoration center to remember is that it has a lot of the same features as the mental health crisis center, but it has a larger focus on substance abuse treatment. And so the other thing is that with the mental health crisis centers typically stays are relatively brief. The restoration center is a much larger facility, and most of them, the one in Bear County was discussed a lot in the summer of 19 when council was considering these projects. So the one in Bear County really has a lot of different programs that allow for extended stays, and so they have kind of the same facilities, like if you need immediate stabilization, but there are other programs. You know, you can see here on this slide, they have a sobering unit, which is obviously an alternative to the public inebriate facility. They have an extended stay, which is like a 48-hour stay that you can get held by licensed medical staff. And then they also have a 28-bed detox unit, which has, it's basically a five-to-seven day program, which is managed by medical professionals that can help people with substance abuse problems. And so it's really just, we talk about it sometimes as being a mental health crisis center on steroids. It's got a lot more services. It's much more medically oriented than the crisis centers. And there's really not a peer facility for this. I'm sure council's probably aware of this. The one in Bear County was discussed a lot, and so that's really what we're looking to as the model for this facility. And so we've spoken to that a little bit in the RFP. You see here some of the specific components that are mentioned in the RFP. Again, you can see that it's very substance abuse focused, focused on medical treatment of people that need those services. I think a lot of the requirements that pertain to the mental health crisis center also apply to the restoration center, and so you can see a lot of the same requirements here. We're looking for someone that has the ability, can show the ability to manage and operate a facility like this. We're obviously looking for someone with non-municipal funding in order to support operations. All the same requirements in terms of a single operator or multiple operators under a single legal entity. I don't know that I need to go through a lot of detail here. All the same submittal requirements as the mental health crisis center, and so we think that the responses on these will look very similar. The schedule for the restoration center is also very similar, where we would like to advertise these on the same day. We would have pre-proposal conferences on the same day at different times so that people that are possibly interested in operating both can attend both meetings. And really, the selection process would be done in a very parallel fashion in our minds. So with that, I'd take any questions.
Yeah. Thank you for walking us through that. And again, I would just request that as these MAPS projects reach these various stages, I think similar presentations are, quite frankly, necessary. Yeah, that's a good, I like, see, the councilperson over here is agreeing with me. That's neat. I like that. It's just important because otherwise, what's going to happen is there are going to be people, like I said, slip-slide from their memory, and moreover, demagogues in our community will make it seem like we're not doing anything to address these very real human needs that have only multiplied in the pandemic when it comes to mental health services, for instance, substance abuse, et cetera. We've all been listening to national news about, was it fentanyl or this? So I'm just saying, like, we're doing some things at the local level to really try and improve the actual quality of lives, life and lives, save lives, and we need to speak to it. Otherwise, people will fill that vacuum when we don't. So that'd be my encouragement with these projects as we continue moving forward. A question, and I would never have thought to ask this had it not been from the last 18 months of law enforcement task force work and the public safety resolution. In the contract, is there language in there that discusses cultural competency when it comes to mental health care providers?
So I guess just to remind you where we're at in this process, this RFP is just to get a respondent to the table. As far as specific language that will be in the contract, that'll be determined at a later date. So that agreement hasn't even been developed quite yet.
Yeah, I guess to clarify, my worry would be that as the RFP goes out, that respondents might respond, not realizing that that is an area of pretty significant importance, that cultural competency piece.
Yeah.
So would that be something that we can either amend?
Sure.
Right now? Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, we had a similar conversation on the youth center, some things that you were concerned about, and so we can absolutely get that amended and out on the street.
And then the only thing is, I know Councilwoman Hammond, I don't know if you have any comments, but this is just your background more than it is mine, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have much else. I have two stories weighing on my mind that speak to some systemic problems within, like, I'm never going to be the person that says that our mental health system is perfect, even when it works for people, quote-unquote, works. But specifically for people who have difficulty accessing private care for detox or crisis. Like, these are just important to have because I would hope that some of the stories that I've heard could be avoided, especially with the restoration center in particular. I'm thinking of an experience that a gentleman had going to a crisis center that was not set up for medical detox. And he ended up in the back of a police car, hogtied, and was sentenced to multiple years in prison for assaulting an officer while he's in the midst of a mental health crisis. So I'd hope that something like this restoration center would avoid situations like that because they are set up for that medical support piece. But knowing that, you know, the recovery center is our only, within Oklahoma City, our only detox facility for folks that have, you know, no or very poor insurance, and they are constantly, constantly full, constantly wait, long, long wait lists. So I'm excited that this process can start so we can get an operator at the table and really start talking about how we avoid those issues that people do experience with our current continuum of care, but also provide that expanded service and take some weight off of current services that are providing that safety and support for residents. But we've just underfunded and defunded them for so long that people end up falling through the cracks and really, in ways that further that trauma and that experience. And so I'm excited that this is moving along. I'll just be excited to talk to the folks when they come to the table, so.
Thank you. Okay, we have a resident who's signed up to speak on this item, Michael Washington.
You know, I have to apologize. I thought that you was going over. I have a man in my word. I have to apologize when I'm wrong. Doggone it hurts me, but I got to do it. Well, well, sir, thank you so much. Let me get one thing clear to everyone. I just don't have enough time. I'm just getting my motors running when I start off. But anyhow, let's see if I can condense that to your satisfaction, one only. This operating partner, sir, y'all have piqued my interest on several areas today. I love that. You understand me? And while I may be short of money to be able to compete, I'm sure with all these fundings and all these money with the economic development trust and all this stuff, y'all could help me out, can't you? I mean, you're loaning money to everybody else, right? So why should I be any different? So I want to sign at the table. I want to do discussions. I want to see what this operating partner with this restoration center looks like. I want to know if he's tall, round, bold, short. And also, I want to know, when it comes to mental health, this is very, very a unique, touchy subject. Because each one of us has someone in our family, and I don't care who you are, you have someone who has a mental disability, or I like to say, challenge. Okay? By the way, I teach those things, too, by the way. Whatever I do is methodical. It's not by accident when you see me get up. By the way, I already come in with my mind depending on how I'm treated. I'll give back how I'm given. Okay? Now, mental health is very important because, and then now the one that's on Lincoln that's being built, I don't know if that's going to be for young folks, anybody, or whatever, youth center for older, young, or whatever, mental, middle age? Thank you, thank you. Oh, my age? Oh, don't be talking about my age now. I'm doing all right now. Come on, man. I'm not down quite yet. Thank you, though. But no, it's good, you know, that we have someone on each side. These kind of things are developing. They help to develop the community because we want these people to know that they're not forgotten. We want them to know that you are important. And guess what? To be a good guy like myself because I know how to keep them happy, to keep them joyful in laughter, dancing, singing, huh, dominoes. 64, well, but I still run them youngsters like I'm a gazelle.
Thirty seconds, please.
Thirty. You and that's our phrase, man. Thirty seconds, me and you. But anyway, y'all, like I said, seriously speaking, let's get this thing together out here. Recognize, Michael Washington, you won't have no problem with it. I'd like to be given my status of approval like anyone else would. I remember when growing up, mama, mama, look, I got an A for math. Oh, boy, here's yours. Okay? So give me mine, I'm going to give you yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C D, Councilwoman Nice, you wanted to speak to that?
Yes. I just found this to be very interesting, so if we could just have, I know a lot of us have been looking at the possibilities and the opportunities for Union Station, so I know this is part of that process. So just if you'll explain that, please.
Sure. Hi, good morning, Mayor and Council. Jason Fairbrush, Public Transportation and Parking Director. And yeah, we've been working on transferring the ownership of Union Station to the city for some time now. A little bit of background is, you're probably aware, this station was actually purchased back in the 80s by COTPA using some federal grant funds. And so, of course, we needed, meaning COTPA needed to get the FTA to authorize that transfer from, say, a transit purpose to a more general purpose within the city. We were successful in accomplishing that primarily by demonstrating that the plans for the building that Public Works and the MAPS office are involved in more deeply than we are in terms of some of the architectural work they've had done demonstrated a higher and best use of the facility than, say, what we're currently using it for, for transit. So with approval of this item, then by deed, that ownership will transfer from COTPA to the city. And then that's really, in my mind, at least, kind of the lever then that allows all these other things that are planned for the building to begin occurring. And then finally, there's also an item, or there's another piece of this item, and that is a lease between the city and COTPA through the end of this fiscal year. And the reason for that is simply, you know, to allow COTPA to continue to maintain control of the building. We do have a lease agreement with Scissor Tail in place right now. It just buys us some time to transition all of that. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you for that. And the reason I wanted to bring that up is, one, it's a lot of different hands and different components that are a part of this process. And being on the MAPS III Advisory Board, I know that we just passed something last council meeting pertaining to you all as far as Embark is concerned with this same particular location. So just wanted to kind of connect those dots so folks understand what's happening because I know a lot of people are still expecting for us to renovate and make that space available to the public as promised. But clearly, you have to go through these steps to get there, so thank you for that explanation.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes the consent docket. We can now take a vote to adopt the items that have not been previously deferred or adopted or struck. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, that brings us to the concurrence docket. We have items A through K we can take with one motion. That's item 10. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11, items requiring separate votes. Items A and B were deferred, so that brings us to item C. An ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval of 5101 North Penn going from R1 to S P U D 1351. Councilman Cooper.
Is the applicant, the applicant there, I believe they are? Come on down. Let's surprise them.
This is a little bit different. Please.
Sure. David Box, 522 Colacord Drive. The applicant, Ryan McNeil, also here with me. This is a continuation of the Oak development that is now beginning to be underway. We actually went to Planning Commission about three weeks ago for the specific plan to allow building permits to issue for the hotel, some of the retail, and the multifamily piece. So this is a sliver to the west that, once we got into the engineering, realized that a portion of what was needed was left off. Nothing changes about the project. This is just a cleanup piece to the west. It mirrors track two regulations within the main P U D, which is P U D 1715. Staff recommended approval. It was unanimously recommended approval by Planning Commission, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't think I have any questions except for, do we have just kind of an update on the project timeline and how things are just going generally? It seems like things are moving along nicely.
Sure. So three weeks ago, we had to go to Planning Commission for a specific plan. Some PUDs, if you don't have the specific details at the time of zoning, require specific plans. So when you go to specific plan, you now have the details and the elevations necessary to submit for building permit. And so that's where we are, where we are. I believe that we have all the entitlements necessary to move forward with the apartments and the hotel and the retail pieces.
Well, thank you for that update. I can tell you, people reach out to me about just an update status, and so I appreciate. I'm sure they'll enjoy hearing that. So unless there are any other further questions, I would move for approval.
Okay. And we'll move. A motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items D, E, and E were previously deferred. Brings us to item F. This is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval. This is a special permit to operate a moderate-impact institutional use in the double-A agricultural district at 12613 South Western Avenue. Councilman Greenwell.
Thank you, Your Honor. This was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission, and I don't believe there's anyone signed up to speak, is there?
No.
Okay. So with that, I'll recommend approval. And I would like to vote yes, please.
Oh, we don't even have a, well, I guess we're probably waiting on you to make a motion.
Sorry. It's okay if someone would like to make the motion.
Someone wants to pitch in on that. There we go. We got a motion in a second.
Thank you.
Cast your votes, and Councilman Greenwell votes aye. Passes unanimously. Okay, item F and G were previously, no, we did F. Item G was previously deferred, which brings us to item H. So this is an ordinance on final hearing. This relates to the hotel tax. We've heard a presentation on this. We had a public hearing on this, and today is potential final passage. What does the council wish to do with this proposed ordinance change? What does the council wish to do with this proposed ordinance change? Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Again, I'd like to vote yes, please.
Okay, Councilman Greenwell votes aye. Passes unanimously. All right, eleven I is similarly is an ordinance on final hearing that has had three meetings in its cycle. We had a presentation, a public hearing, and now today. Potential final consideration. This relates to motor vehicles for hire. What would the council wish to do? So motion and a second. Cast your votes. Councilman Greenwell, how do you wish to vote? Councilman Cooper, you've walked into the middle of a vote. Looks like you voted, yeah, okay, great. Passes unanimously. All right, eleven J. This is an ordinance to be introduced, and the request is to adopt it with an emergency. So we just have one meeting today. This relates to animals amending Chapter Eight, Article Two, Division One, Section eight ninety-six of the municipal code. And there is a presentation.
Yes, John Gary, our Animal Welfare Superintendent, is here to give us a presentation on this important ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to briefly kind of go to how we got here today. Last February, we suffered some, you know, obviously, record-breaking extreme cold temperatures. And it became very apparent during that time that we did not have a sufficient ordinance enough to protect the animals that were in critical danger at that time. And so, over the last year, we've worked with legal, looked at other communities and what they were doing. And during that time period, that two or three days, we received more cruelty complaints in those two or three days than we typically see in an entire month. So we knew our community also wanted us to do better and to do more for the animals as well. So what we did is we started looking at other communities and looking at the temperatures and what was the appropriate temperature, and where should we set it at? And was working with our veterinarian, our staff veterinarian, as well as veterinarians from Best Friends and A S P C A. And we came up with this thirty-two degrees at freezing. Anytime the weather gets below thirty-two degrees, the animals outdoor, that are being kept outdoors need added protection. And so the ordinance required that the animal is either in a structure that is heated or they have to be brought indoors to protect them and keep them safe. And so that's really the basis of the ordinance, and it's very straightforward and pretty simple. And really, it's just another step in our process of ensuring that Oklahoma City is a humane community for animals, and the animals are valued and protected. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I do have a question as it pertains to breed of animal, because I have friends that have huskies. And like last week, whenever that was during the storm, like they want to go outside and just be there. So I recognize this is like on a complaint basis. So if your neighbor is like, yeah, it's your husky, and they're loving it, and they're rolling around in the snow, and it's ten degrees, and they want to stay out there until their heart's content. But I just, I guess I worry if people maybe don't understand that, that this might, I don't know, just like, I just wonder if that was a consideration and the degrees intered into the language.
It definitely was. We looked at that, because there are certain dog breeds that can withstand a lot more extreme temperatures than others. And so we needed to have a baseline there, we needed to have something to go by. But, you know, really, our goals with our community is more to educate and provide resources. And our officers, you will use discretion in events of those cases where dogs are not, they're not in jeopardy because they are tolerable to those temperatures. But we do want to make sure the ordinance allowed us to address it, at least. And then the ones that, the officer did an investigation, and everything was okay, and the animal was safe, then we would, you know, use discretion there, not pursue that.
John?
Yeah.
So this is specific to dogs, but are there any rules pertaining to other types of animals that are maintained as pets?
There are, you know, we do have ordinance that protect, you know, for livestock and that provide the specific shelters required and those types of things. But typically, what we see in these cases are dogs. You know, all of those cases that we received last year during those extreme temperatures were all for dogs.
Thank you.
And then I just want to say thank you to John and Rita, everyone who worked to craft this ordinance. I especially want to say thank you, there was a young man in Military Park when I was knocking doors who literally pointed across the street to someone. It was cold, and he just pointed across the street, like, this isn't right, seeing this dog chained up like this in these temperatures. And I especially want to thank Michelle and Tony Muzell, who are Ward Two residents. I met them knocking doors. And they reached out to me, and then I just forwarded their email to you, and then legal, and you all worked together. And I just think that's wonderful to see residents working with city staff, working with municipal council to craft these sort of protections for these dogs. And I don't know that Tony knew what we were going to be able to do. And I think this is such an impressive piece of work. So I just, I'm really thankful for all of you for helping to craft it, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so as previously indicated, the proposal here from staff is to not only adopt this today, but to also adopt it with an emergency, obviously, presumably so that it can do some good in the remainder of this winter. So what does the council wish to do? So this would be taken as a motion for adoption. We would have to have a separate vote on the emergency. So we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now we would need a separate motion for an emergency that would thereby cause the ordinance to take effect immediately. That would require seven votes as well. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously, and with the required seven affirmative votes. Thank you. Okay, K one is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed, items A and B. Has anyone signed up to speak on this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
They have not, so we'll advance to the resolution at K two declaring that... Yes.
On item number B, I would like to defer that.
Okay.
I believe I may know the owners of this property, so I'd like to make sure they are aware.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, that's fine, thank you.
So we'll bring up a motion to defer item eleven K one B. Deferral for two weeks. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. So we're left with item one A and the resolution at K two declaring that that item is dilapidated. If the council wants to move on that. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Eleven L one is a public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed. Has anyone signed up to speak, Amy?
No, they haven't.
Hearing none, we'd advance to eleven L two, the resolution declaring that the structures are unsecured, except for those previously struck. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Eleven M one is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we will move on to M two, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned, except for those previously struck. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item N was previously deferred, which brings us to item O, resolution authorizing the municipal counselor to confess judgment without admitting liability in the case of Duncan v. City of OKC. Executive session has not been requested. So if the council wishes to adopt the resolution, we'll await a motion. We have one and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, eleven P is a request to enter into executive session on advice of the municipal counselor to receive confidential communications from its attorney concerning the pending opioid litigation filed on behalf of the City of Oklahoma City, et cetera. So we can handle a vote here, there's no related resolution, but we do wish to receive an update on this lawsuit in executive session. And we have a motion and a second to do so. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will handle that executive session after our other business, which also includes a previously scheduled executive session already approved. Now we're at item twelve, comments from council. We'll start with Ward one.
Not today, sir, thank you.
Ward two?
Just really two items. Because I spoke at length last time about the role Richard Allen played in Black History, I'll refer everyone back to that video for my comments on Black History Month, and just wish everyone a happy Black history, excuse me, wish everyone a Black history, happy Black History Month. That was really hard for me to get those words out of my mouth. Secondly, I want to thank Embark staff. Last week, they met with me, and we did a ride around the city for proposed route changes to the existing bus routes. And I've encouraged them to reach out to some of the other council members who might see some of those routes changed as well. But I just really want to thank Chip, and Kristen, and Jason, and Jesse for literally carving out a ti, like, three hours of the day where we drove around this city, the east side. We went all the way up to Council Road and Northwest Expressway, Reno, and Blackwelder. It's just wonderful work that our Embark staff does, and I just really appreciate their time that day. And that is all I have, thank you.
Ward three?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things today. Shout out, of course, to the police department employees who raised twenty-three thousand dollars through the polar plunge this last weekend for Special Olympics Oklahoma. Really proud of the turnout there and the fundraising that they did, as well as all of the neighboring departments and other participants in that. Special Olympics is a very important cause, with a lot of really great kids participating in sports. And this helps fund those activities. So shout out to my friend, Tanika Miller, who participates in Special Olympics and has for as long as I've known her, so I'm really proud of that. And then K nine Joker and Handler Master Sergeant Nelson in South Oklahoma City on their first catch. So way to go, guys. Way to go, Joker. Go get them. That's all I've got this morning.
All right, Ward four?
City manager, I'm so sorry. I, I'm so sorry. OKC Fire, I need to say an incredible thank you to them. You just made me think of that with police. The work they have been doing in Ward Two is extraordinary. It is extraordinary. And I just have to say that in a public setting. But I also have to ask some questions, city manager. Is it possible that come next council meeting, we're able to receive some sort of public update on just the status of what we've learned? And then I've also had the resident of Glenbrook reach out to me, and they would like to know just kind of updates about what's going to happen over there. They're very worried about the original design of the building, contributing, they would argue, that they're arguing. And they just want to know what next steps are, I suspect a lot of the city's residents do.
Yeah, I think we should, I mean, we could look to see if we would be ready on that. I can't guarantee that we would as far as like providing an update. I would like to visit with you on the questions regarding what can happen at that site. I think we probably get the municipal council's office involved with that, too. Because anything that's authorized there already continues to be authorized for that site. But we can have some more discussion about that.
That would be very helpful, thank you.
Ward six?
Yes, the only thing I have is, I really want to just express all my appreciation, gratitude to the staff who worked with us on the, I guess, urban poultry ordinance. Of course, there were staff that helped us through that process this time around. But I know about ten years ago, the ordinance was previously considered. And I think so much of the work that staff did at that point, I know in our planning department, legal, there's just a range of staff that worked on that at the time that didn't have to necessarily be involved this time around because a lot of that groundwork of research had been done that we were able to kind of just pivot off of that previous work and kind of just get those updates about what had happened in the last ten years through other municipalities that had adopted similar ordinances and be able to kind of learn and incorporate what we needed to out of those. So just don't want to let that opportunity go by without acknowledging all those staff from, some of them might not be around anymore in our planning department, but I know some are, and I just really appreciate all their work doing that ten years ago, because it really, I think, helped lay the groundwork and make us not have to do as much work this time. So appreciate that, their input and contributions to that effort.
Thank you. Ward seven?
Yes. I do want to again thank our H R task force once more for their presentation, one from our co-chairs. And I also want to thank, and I did not mention her prior, Ms. Sharita Bryce, because she scheduled and helped us to stay on task as well. So her role was very important for us, and I'm really appreciative for her and her work. I wanted to also thank Oklahoma Christian University for having their history speaks. And they brought in Mrs. Cheryl Brown Henderson, and she was the daughter of the Mr. Brown, which was one of the families represented in Brown versus Board of Education at all. And she was very informative as far as the history of the case. And she was at the time, her mom was pregnant with her at the time this case started. So her memory of this is being afforded the opportunity to reap the benefits of Brown versus Board of Education. So thankful for her conversation, and it was a timely discussion and us understanding why we have to talk about culture, cultural differences, why we have to talk about generational differences, and why we have to talk about the things that are uncomfortable for us to be able to get to a place where we can find resolve and to not repeat those same instances or trauma that has happened to any group. So let it be known that it's not just black and white when we say "culture." We have a mix of Irish, we have a mix of German, we have a mix of all of these different things that we have to continue that conversation about because we have differences, and that makes us able to speak about them and embrace them at the same time. So here is your Black History Month fact, and I say that because this time, I'm involved in this in a very special way, and I didn't even know I was. And the reason I bring this up is, I went to an estate sale last summer, and I saw it on Instagram, and the gentleman said, "Estate sale, northeast Oklahoma City at this house." And I was like, ooh, that's not far from me, I'm going. So mind you, when I went, it was a Saturday, and it was an afternoon. And as I walked in, all I saw was books. I saw books, and I saw all kind of different things around the house. And I was like, man, I wonder whose house this was. You always get that question in your head when you go to these types of things. Anywho, as I was looking for books to, because I'm looking for, Behold the Walls by Clara Looper, I still can't find it because it's out of print. So that was my look, I was looking for that. I found a scrapbook. And this scrapbook contained information from the gentleman who lived there once before. His name is Mr. Walter Mason, Jr. And it talked about his history, and he kept his own history. And as I kept on looking at it, I grabbed it, and I walked out. And me and my mom went back the next day because there was just so much more to look at. Well, I realized that I had some history because Mr. Mason was the first black faculty member at Oklahoma Baptist University in nineteen sixty-eight. And he kept his own records, again, in this scrapbook. And he also had copies of the Black Dispatch newspaper, which I do have. He also had books pertaining to police and community, as far as community policing from nineteen sixty-eight. as far as community policing from 1968, from what happened in Detroit, Michigan, pertaining to community and police as far as just some uncomfort with those relationships. So again, taking that history, it needs to be talked about. But Mr. Mason was a trailblazer in his own right, again, integrating and being the first black faculty member at Oklahoma Baptist University. And I found this out after I talked to some folks that I knew at Oklahoma Baptist University. And they used this information. I donated it to the university for them to be able to have. And they have created now a display that honors Walter Mason Jr. and his efforts. Now, mind you, I did not realize, and I found this out last week, that Mr. Mason died in 1986. His wife passed away in 2020, and this estate sale was last year. So this history had been sitting in their home for this long. So I'm so happy that the university embraced it and embraced his story because there had been conversations that another professor at the university was the first African-American to be faculty. Whereas, we found out by history and record that Mr. Mason was the first. So it's good to have those types of stories and have those type of references pertaining to history and the people that you do not know. I had no idea who Mr. Mason was because clearly he died when I was in elementary school. So I wouldn't have known his effort and his contribution, but I read about it. So I think that was the most important part about that. I do want to say yesterday was a great day for northeast Oklahoma City with Eastside Pizza House. So congratulations to JB Williams. We had a grand opening at 11:00, and the line was out the door down the street almost. And I know it was steady like that for the, most of the day. So you can get a pizza named after Ralph Ellison, named after Clara Looper, named after Deep Deuce District, and also contributing to the community. And I think it's important, as we talked about, lack of food access in certain communities. This is also one of these areas where we have neighbors who, who are looking for pizza. And the reason I say that is because we do not have a pizza place until yesterday in the quadrant of northeast Oklahoma City. And the ones that are not located in northeast Oklahoma City will openly say they will not deliver to northeast Oklahoma City. But now we have that type of pizza that is for the community and brought to us by this young man. So I wanted to make mention of that because we look at East Point and that development as the Renaissance and beginning of particularly northeast 23rd Street. So we're completing that puzzle of what the potential of ownership looks like when you involve community at the forefront of the conversation. So that was your, your Ward 7 outtake. So I'm grateful and also looking forward to our Black History Month presentations for the Oklahoma City Thunder that we're going to have later in the month.
Councilwoman, which pizza did you have? What would you recommend?
I re- I recommend the Deep Deuce. It is, it has meat on it, has pepperonis and sausage and all of the great things you would like. And there are three out of most of those offerings that do not have meat. So they are veggie options. So I think that's a, a great thing that you have diversity in even your pizza choices that you can have. And just taking in the side of inside of what this place looks like and honoring Ralph Ellison and Clara Looper, and also E. Melvin Porter. And his family was there yesterday, and the family of Clara Looper was there yesterday. So being able to see, for our community to see and place a hand on their descendants clearly spoke to why this was important for us yesterday.
Ward 2 is going to be there a lot, so we're going to thank you for those recommendations.
All right, thank you. That concludes items from, comments from council. We now have item 13, citizens to be heard. And we've had a few who signed up. Reverend Legg? Please state your name and address and keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Hi, I am Paulette Legg, and my address is 1918 44th Street, Oklahoma City. I am an awakened consciousness in your community just recently. And I come before you today as I intend to come before you each time I come before you for the purpose of finding some place of commonality with this august body, to discuss things that are very near and dear to me as an African-American citizen of this country and property owner in this state. To forward my goal of getting acquainted with you, which is where I like to start all dialogue that's reaching for understanding. Since I don't know you, I started out letting you get acquainted with me. In our last meeting, I was giving you a little bit of my history of who I am that stands before you today because I stand before you with my consciousness of every year I've lived since 1959. And I left you the last time with the first etching of my consciousness that, hmm, something is not right here at the age of five and six. When I watched people who looked like me on TV being hosed and beaten by people who look like most of you. And I wondered in my five, six, seven-year-old consciousness what that might have been that I was beholding. The second eruption to my quiet and preconceived notion of my being safe in the security of living in the USA and in my parents' home would come 30 years later, 1993. And it would be a, a prelude to the horrors that we are living now. And just an inkling of the depths of man's continual downward spiral into a greater fallen condition that was not yet really, really fully realized. This event in 1993, the bombing of the World Trade Center, almost escaped our immediate attention, that is, to society, to society in danger, regarding society, society's endangerment. But in the assessment of this event, in the aftermath, the aftermath, the aftermath, we always go back and look at things hindsight in the aftermath to try and understand what we missed in the actuality.
Yep, 30 seconds remaining.
We came to understand in that aftermath review that this event would be an unmistakable notice, a wake-up call, if you will, delivered to the front door of what we love in this country more than we love our own souls, money and power. A wake-up call in 1993 will bring me to my next awful thrashing that occurred right here in our dear city of Oklahoma City in 1995. But let me leave this with you. We're all on a journey. We are definitely on a journey together. And what we do down here every day of our lives, certainly what you do in your positions, is being noted because it affects so many of God's people. I'm really concerned about the disparity in this city that I've been able to observe, especially with that of the northeast quadrant of this city. I've sat here for about four visits and watched money come and money go, and money promised to be allocated in this place or another.
Reverend Legg, can you wrap up as their last?
He who has ears to hear, let him hear.
Thank you. Ronnie Kirk?
First of all, I'd say Governor Holt, I mean, Merholt, congratulations on your win.
Thank you.
The other three candidates, we just know something about them for three days. We know you, your track record is perfect. The city will go forward. Police chief, Ray Garland. In 2020, I went to the police department and asked him, "Would you send some police out to play basketball with the kids?" I posted that on Facebook three days ago, the video. He stepped up to the plate, sent police to play basketball with the kids for three hours. We had entertainment for him, food for him, Jeremiah Kirk, Michael Jackson entertainer. Inside the, those newspapers, the Black Chronicles, you know, those on bands? We was there, we give them to the Homeless Alliance for the homeless. They were so grateful. And for the two judges that made it possible for us to get those on bands, this article. The article won't come out till Friday, but we had put something in there for my notes to give the judges, the county judges, respect and say thanks. There's also some handouts in there. I talked to the Maribol, the lady over the Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Meeks, she's over the Chamber of Commerce in Langston about teaching people how to comply when they stop by the police. And the Bowley Rodeo, they're going to have it again this year, starting this year.
30 seconds, please.
They said they want to do it during the halftime. Moon School, I'm supposed to talk to the principal so he can get with the Douglas principal and try to have the event there in the Douglas Stadium for the whole community to come out and watch it. You know, you can't give them a booklet or let them watch a video. It's just like the, the, the information I put, the handout. That's the way we're going to get it done, going through the city. And thank you. Come on, baby.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Mia Johnson?
Okay. I said my name?
Yeah, tell me your name first.
My name is Mia Johnson, and I go to FD Moon Middle School, and I am in the eighth grade. So I would like to talk about on how a few weeks ago, I took a test for NAEP, I think it was. And they had told me that Oklahoma was at the bottom of education. So that had me thinking, for me, if I wanted to be a lawyer, our school district should have better education for people, for people like, for people who wants to do things. So, and also, I'm in, I'm currently taking AP classes in the eighth grade. And what we're learning isn't better for what we should be learning. It should be more advanced for people who are in AP classes and taking them, so.
Like, want me to speak at the school for Black History?
Oh, and my principal wants my great-grandfather to come and talk to my class about Black, Black History because I chose to do my report on him because he does a lot for the city of Oklahoma. And I think it would be great for everybody in Oklahoma to know what my grandfather does.
Excuse, is it, it's Maya? Mia? I'm so sorry, Mia? Where are you learning right now in your AP classes?
Well, it's currently, basically, we're learning stuff that in math class, we're learning stuff we already know. Well, I think it's like stuff already know, like as in like surface, like finding the volume of surface area and, and rectangles and stuff. And in ELA, we're learning how to write argumentative, argumentative essays and stuff.
I would encourage you as a teacher, just as you came here today, which, by the way, I've had friends stand at that podium, and they, they were nowhere near as passionate as you just were. And actually, a lot of them kind of start cowering when they speak. It's kind of scary to stand at that podium. So I'm really proud of you right now. Something I would encourage you to do, I do with my students, you might start a dialogue with your teachers. Tell them, just like you just told us, what's missing. Like, hey, we already know this. And then start offering what more, what you think you're going to need to be able to go do the sort of work you want to do as a lawyer, as an adult. Like, start making a list and start sharing that. And hopefully, you have some teachers who are worthy of your ideas. And if not, friend, you just keep educating yourself. I've had to do a lot of that during my time. But share your ideas with your teachers and share them with your classmates, too, and see what you can do, all right? Thank you for your time.
And Ms. L- Ms. Johnson, I would talk to Mr. Linden, talk to Mr. Felix Linden. He's a teacher at FD Moon. I know, I'm sure you may be a little aware of him. And I know he would be able and willing to start some of those discussions because he wants you all to succeed. And I, I do want to congratulate your fellow classmembers who were able to participate in the competition and more. And we had three students placed from FD Moon in a scholastic competition. So I'm very excited and, and glad that you are one of those fellow students participating in, in great classes. So if there's something that we can do, you don't hesitate to let us know, okay?
Can I say just one more thing? When I came to the city council meeting back in November, I said I was opening up a commonwealth at Sharon Center, but nobody knew how many skills I had. The Black Chronicle newspaper put every skill I had, license and everything, in the article you have today. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Michael Washington?
Well, y'all, it's been a very positive conclusion with that young lady. And again, I'm here available myself. I'm just going to say it's going to take, probably will need to take three minutes. But right here have a county jail, county detention center report prepared by Mr. Greg Williams. And in it, he lists more than 1,200 inmates who have chronic conditions in the Oklahoma County Detention Center at the top. 701 of them have a basal mental health condition. This is why it is imperative to me, y'all, that something be done about the county jail, as y'all know, for a straight year now. And I'm going to even going to be doing the last setup this month, making it 13 straight months, consecutive months, that I've been demonstrating out in front of the Oklahoma County Detention Center to let our voices be heard that we would not tolerate such inconsiderate conditions of prisoners being confined in wholly deplorable, hu- inhumane conditions that threatens not only their physical, mental health, but their actual lives because within 2020, so far, 23 have died. Really? Now, come on, something wrong with that picture there? Since 2020, when the- Since 2020, when the county jail authority took over, coronal justice authority took over, 23 inmates have died. Now, there's something wrong with that picture. Let me say in closing, I would like to also be recognized, I think I will be, as the sole creator and actual preserver of the Freedom Center here in Oklahoma City. The oldest landmark known to the African-American culture here in Oklahoma, Michael Washington, single-handedly by himself, saved the Freedom Center, which I know Clara Lueck, the late, great Clara Lueck educator, civil rights leader, is so happy to know that I did not let those people tear that building down where it all started at. And in honor of that, it was approved by this illustrious group here, thank y'all very much, in August 28th, 2019, 2019. So I appreciate all y'all on that. Let me say as well, let me close out here. I'm not gonna try to take much of my time, but I'm ready to go eat myself. But in closing, my name now gets to shine in history because, watch this here, when that Freedom Center opens, who do we have to say and give that profound recognition to? I can stand up and say, oh, the gods on high, thank you for giving me the hindsight to preserve this historic landmark that is now gonna have a lot more properties added on. Thank y'all so much, and I think I'm gonna be better.
Thank you. Okay, so all we have remaining is an executive session where we'll handle a couple of items previously approved, and we will return where we may cast a vote. We'll now depart for executive session.
I thought it wrote you.
Okay, we're back from executive session and we do still have the pending item of 3I-1, resolution appointing a city auditor to the office of the city auditor on an interim basis, pending a final decision by the council on the appointment of a permanent city auditor. So I will turn to Councilwoman Young for a motion appointing a interim city auditor.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move to appoint Matt Weller interim city auditor effective February 4th at a salary of $170,000.
Okay. That is the motion. Now we can handle that virtually.
Mine's stuck.
All right, do we need to do this verbally?
Can we do it verbally?
Can they do it verbally?
Yes.
All right, so you have a motion from Councilwoman Young, second from Councilman Carter.
Aye.
And Bushwell, she's going to have to go around no more.
Aye.
Councilperson Cooper.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye? All right, so it passes unanimously with how many here left? Seven of us. With seven affirmative votes, which fulfills the requirement of six to establish salary. Thank you now interim auditor Weller for your willingness to serve. And we'll revisit the topic of permanent auditor in the future. And that concludes our business today. And we have reached item 14, which is adjournment. And we are adjourned. Thank you.